Welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, February 5th, 2020. Could I please ask everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. So first on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have three set of minutes in our packets. We have one from our business meeting on January 22nd, a second from our executive session on January 22nd, and then a third from the MASC training that we just did on Friday, January 31st. We should probably approve them separately because not all of us were at each of the three meetings.
So motion to approve the minutes from January 22nd?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, John, are you abstaining?
I abstain.
Okay. So four, zero, and one. Okay.
And motion to approve the minutes from January 31st?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstaining, Mark. So four, zero, one on that. Mark, abstention. And then the MASC training, I'm sorry, the executive session training, executive session on Wednesday, January 22nd.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
Yes, we do. We have a electronic mail from Paul Halakiotis, the Director of Planning and Economic Development here in Norwood. Sorry, Norwood. Good afternoon, David. We received good news yesterday. The state has approved our application to be designated as a green community. We want to thank you and the members of the school committee for your assistance with the application. We also want to thank Paul Ricardi for all of his help. The designation comes with $182,000 in grant money for energy reduction projects. Now the real work begins, reducing the town's energy consumption by 20% over the next five years. We look forward to working with you, Paul, and the committee on this important effort that will lead to more energy-efficient schools that will be more comfortable for the students and staff. Sincerely, Paul.
That's great. Third is warrants. We have a smaller warrant package this week, but the warrants are behind me, and I asked the committee to please sign those before you leave. So we have two building and ground warrants, first in the amount of $3,848.55, second one for $17,830.93. Then there are nine accounts payable warrants, the first for $14,157.55, the second for $10,554.83, third for $6,234.55, next $48,409.43, $3,301.67, $5,483.55, $26,764.14, $7,351.85, and lastly, $373,784.13 for a grand total of $517,721.18. Is there any questions on the warrants? Okay, perfect. So next on our agenda is public forum. Is there anybody here tonight who wanted to speak to the school committee under public forum? Oh, you're next under an appearance. Yeah. Okay, so seeing none, I declare public forum closed. And now announcements, Dr. Thompson?
I'll wait for the superintendent's report to make any announcements, Madam Chair.
Okay, perfect. So we have a couple of appearances tonight, and we're going to start with the Christmas Holiday Concert Committee. So if you would like to join us at this table, you're welcome. So if you'd like to introduce yourself, and then I understand that you're here to present us with a donation.
Thank you very much. My name is Judith Howard, and I'd like to introduce a group of, first of all, Tony Esco, Scanda Marion Gahd, and Chucky Kathy Burgess, she's not here tonight, and Jim and Terry Drummond. Oh, I'm sorry, Steve. I'm sorry, Steve.
Well, welcome, everybody.
Two months ago, we held the Christmas Holiday Concert at the Norwood Theater. It was a major success, and it was a full house. So we were absolutely thrilled. We want to thank actually Kathy Conamoulin because she directed it, and she chose a repertoire that was out of this world, literally, because, well, not literally, fingertil, because it was an international flavor to the concert. It was spectacular. They got standing ovations, and by the way, the soloist was Robert McDonough, who is, I think, head of choral vocals down at the junior high. And so he chose Believe, which is part of the Polar Express. And then we had groups from all over. They're just a wonderful part of the group. So it was a major success, and because of all of that, we'd like to give you a donation. We had wonderful support from sponsors who paid for all the expenses that we incurred. And so we'd like to give you a check of $6,500. And here it is. Thank you.
I'd like to add two things.
Oh, yes.
We have a lot of business sponsors, and the uniqueness of this event was that we had to incur expenses before the sale of the tickets. So the support of the businesses was an absolute necessity, and we just want to say publicly, they were all thanked individually by letter, but we just want to say how important that was. We had never done this before. We had no idea whether it was going to float or not. And we didn't want to hit them on checking accounts for this. We were just amazed at the outpouring. It really hit a real nice soft spot. I think the people at the beginning of December also like to thank, we agreed to play the carillon title while people walked into the theater. And I think the audience who participated in a scene on and just was really cooperative and supportive of this first venue. And we have agreed to try to do it again, that we have learned from experience and hope to do bigger, even better things. And again, without Kathy Conamoulin's leadership, challenging a choral group of adults, some of whom had never met each other, and a very musical challenge, this was actually quite the personal challenge for her, too. She said she really enjoyed a lot. So we just can't thank her enough, and the finance program is very, very dear to us all.
So because of the feedback that we got from everybody, and for a whole month afterwards, I mean, we were like on cloud nine, we were flying high. And because of all that, we decided unanimously to have another one this year, and the Norwood Theater has already been reserved for Thursday, December 3rd, 2020. And because of that, all of that, we want to designate this money to go to the music program of the Department of Finance. That's what we'd like to do with this money. And I thank you so much for listening to us.
Yeah, no, thank you so much for the donation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. (applause) All right, I'll be calling. Return speed loss. Next. That's personal. All right, so that was a wonderful appearance this evening. So our next appearance hopefully is equally as wonderful. Representative Rogers has reached out to ask to come to speak to us tonight about the Student Opportunity Act. So if you'd like to come up, we're very happy to have you here with us this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wish this state budget was in the form of a check, but the money is coming this fiscal year and next fiscal year. So thank you, Madam Chair, and distinguished members of the Norwood School Committee. I just want to thank you for our partnership on behalf of the 3,460 schoolchildren in Norwood, and for our conversations formally and informally throughout the year to improve state law. And you've been at the forefront. You've been leaders in that regard. And, you know, this year, because of some of the fixes in the Chapter 70 formula, Norwood will receive more than $8 million. That's a 21% increase over the last fiscal year. So that's significant when you look at the 2%, or 2.3% was the average increase of the state budget spending. So almost 10 times of that spending level coming back to the Norwood School District. So that's significant. It has been frustrating to try to look to fix the Chapter 70 formula. I tried to do it when I was Chair of the House Ways and Means Committee. It met with opposition not only in the Senate but in the House internally as well. So, you know, a few of us filed a bill to establish the Foundation Budget Review Commission. There was only a handful of us who were pushing this issue, and I was hearing from you folks here in Norwood, either in settings like this, or Paul Fields, or Ocky Ranks, you name it. You've often spoken up, and that's what I love about you, and I love about the leadership that you, that people don't see all the time. So I want to thank you for that because the Foundation Budget Review Commission, of course you know, the Chapter 70 formula was flawed in two major areas. The percentage of sped students who are actually in our school population, not only in the district but statewide, and also the real cost, the healthcare costs associated with our teachers and our retirees. So for four years since its release, we've been pushing my colleagues in the legislature to fund this. We established this legislative commission. We know the flaws. Let's fix, let's fix the flaws. So we do that through the Student Opportunity Act, and also because of the expression of your concerns about the extraordinary costs associated with transportation costs for our sped students, both in district and out of district, we now will begin to incorporate transportation spending as part of the circuit breaker formula. So that's something I started with at Ways and Means to help cities and towns deal with the often absorbing costs associated with our sped students, and including transportation in that cost, in that formula, get school districts to the circuit breaker quicker. And the state is finally now, the last two years, is fully funding sped circuit breaker. And I have a healthy distrust of my colleagues because it takes them so long to get together to do this, that I'm going to continue on your behalf and the schoolchildren and the town to continue to fight for full funding of sped and child of school reimbursement. Child of school reimbursement increases in this fiscal year 250%. It's a, you know, $292,000 increase over last year, which is significant because I don't have to tell you how many teaching jobs. You see what it costs in, you know, human dollars, I would say. So that's happening. The Student Opportunity Act invested another $150 million for the school building, school modernization, and reconstruction trust. That was something we did out of Ways and Means. The Senate didn't want to do it. Governor Romney wanted the old DOE program that was failed, and I remember speaking with my counterpart about creating a model school program, no more Taj Mahals. And Catherine Craven, who was working for me at Ways and Means, became the executive director at that time. Now it's Jack McCarty. So it's also, you know, a Norwood resident, so it's good to have that relationship. But made Norwood really the model school, Norwood High School, the model school for the rest of the Commonwealth. So, you know, you go down to Broad Street, and you speak with the members of the School Building Authority, and they roll out the architectural plans of Norwood High School and said, we'll partner up with you as a state, but here's your model. So the unofficial model was another high school, but Norwood is the model for the rest of the state. And we're going to invest another $150 million on top of the money that's secured for the trust. That's one penny on the sales tax. So last year, it was $826 million. This year will be $972 million. So that's good news when you're planning on whether or not you want to rebuild, you know, one of the elementary schools here, whether it's the Bosch, or the Cali, or the Cleveland, or the old Taylor Prescott. And it's good to know that there's this money that's there that has its own revenue stream, one penny on the sales tax for all sales in the Commonwealth that goes into this trust. That money's not going away. So we're happy to continue to work with you, assuming you want to improve, reconstruct, or newly construct schools. You have a partner with this program that you didn't have a partner really back in the DOE phase. So that's significant. But, I mean, you know, the bottom line is it takes constant communication to not take things for granted. This year, I'll give you, I'll leave you a copy of House 2. This is Governor Baker's bill, and he recommends, you know, a hundred, a significant increase for Norwood. So $1.5 million in Chapter 70 alone. That's a good number. You know, 19% increase in anything is excellent, but it's only a recommendation. The House will begin in earnest, it's, will have hearings on this, House Ways and Means Committee, and will take up the budget the last week of, the last Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of April. And hopefully, we can meet this number, if not exceed it. And there's other fixes that you've brought to my attention on child of school reimbursement with regard, in particular with private tuition costs, how they can increase, which increases your budget. So I'm going to file an amendment to require the rate saving commission to cap it, not more than the increases associated with school district spending increases statewide, unless there's some sort of extraordinary circumstances that can be articulated. So it's, that will be an amendment I will file to the FY 21 state budget in April. I am meeting with Aaron Miklowitz soon. He's the current Chair of the House Ways and Means Committee. I'm going to ask him to put that in there. There's also a state requirement that requires school districts to get individual consent by the families on Medicaid. So that is inconsistent with federal law, and I don't know the need for it because families benefit either way. All it does is tie your hands. And I think that that has, will have a high probability of passing as part of the FY 21 budget. So some of the things we're working on, some of the updates, and happy, Madam Chair, if members of, Dr. Thompson has any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Representative Rogers, are there any questions that you would like to say, my end?
Representative Rogers, thank you for coming. I really am very excited to know that the Student Opportunity Act is coming and that we're going to be seeing more money, and I, we were very happy to see the cherry sheet. Last meeting, we were discussing the governor's proposal for an extra $1.5 million in Chapter 70 reimbursement. In the past, we have just, that Chapter 70 money has just kind of flowed in as part of our regular revenues with this, for the town. But I understand that with some of this new money, there are some restrictions on how it can be spent and a plan that needs to be submitted. Can you talk a little bit about how some of that money is earmarked and, like, what our district responsibility will be in that?
The Joint Committee on Education is working with the governor's office to determine that out, because the governor's is silent on that in the outside section. So that's something we will be addressing. So it'd be helpful for me to continue the dialogue on, not just that one issue alone, no matter the others, heading into, you know, the end of April. Because, you know, if there are concerns, then, you know, I don't work for the state. I work for you and the people of Norwood and Walpole. I would be happy to file an amendment to, you know, ease strictures or restrictions on spending.
Dr. Thompson, as I understand it, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is giving us guidance that, at least for a certain percentage of that $1.5 million, we need to show how that's going to be used to close achievement gaps between different demographic groups?
Yeah, that is. It's actually part of my superintendent's report, but at your place is a worksheet from the Department of Ed. So House 2 budget has us slotted for $1.53754 million. Recommended use of Chapter 70 for ongoing expenses is $978.68, and then $564,886 has got to be used. We have to submit a plan by April 1st on what we are going to do with that money to close achievement gaps. So we had Dr. Paul Ash in yesterday, working with our chairs and our leadership team on methodologies and approaches that actually will do that. We kind of sent everybody home, asked them to take what Dr. Ash shared with us and kind of cross-section it with our strategic plan, some of the things that we are doing, and we are going to come back, hopefully, at some point next week. Dr. Wyeth and I have to try and find a date when we're both in the same place at the same time to foster that conversation and get that going, because we have to have a plan to you by the end of March, and it has to be into the department by April 1st. The window is very small on this, uncomfortably small.
Uncomfortably small.
Uncomfortably small. You would agree with that? This was, correct me if I'm wrong, this was passed in October. We finally started to hear information that we're going to have to spend this increased money in a certain way, maybe in December, and we didn't get any guidance until Monday of this week. So it's going to be, the good news is, is that with the override money, some of the things that we are doing could very well be enhanced by this or further supported by this, but we're still dealing with that. But there's a whole, I got more information than you could possibly want to see that I've collected over the last two days on that that I was sharing with the committee.
I'm sorry, and I just want to clarify, those plans have to be data-driven and evidence-based, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, there's-
So it's not just coming up with a plan, we also have to come up with an assessment that has to be proven, there has to be a track record.
Right, but there seems to be a little bit of a rush to do this the first time around. I, you and I could have a debate on how evidence-driven some of the examples are.
But we can't just come up with a description.
No, we're supposed to be able to measure it and show that it's closing the gaps. And the question is, which groups that are not meeting, and, you know, this is a district with, the part of the reason why we're getting $1.5 million, and we're one of 35 districts in the entire state that's getting more than $1.5 million is because of the number of high-need students we have in this district. I think that's important, that the public realize the reason why we're getting that much money is because our numbers are high in that area. Not as high as Lynn, which is number one. They're getting an increase of 5.7. Brockton's getting 5.5 million, but ours is, ours is in the top 37, only 37 districts in the state are getting more than $1.5 million. So that's important to know.
All right. Thank you again for coming. This is a question related to this but somewhat separate. Proposition two and a half, is there any discussion about, I mean, because I think part of what we're seeing is all of these drivers, you know, have led to an override here in Norwood, as you, as you well know, because there's so much of a stress in terms of these high-needs populations, and obviously, as you, of course, well know, that cost of an outer district placement can be multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars. And as we're seeing, you know, as we're looking ahead to our upcoming budget, you know, we're seeing drivers that are really upping it to the point that it's, it's very onerous, obviously, on us and other communities within the Bay State. Is there just, I'm just curious, kind of, as we're talking about budgets in schools, if there's been any discussion about adjusting that or kind of looking at that on the state level?
Not recently. I haven't heard that specifically, but that's not to say that it can't be addressed now. You know, changing what the voters approved in 1980 is often difficult, to change a percentage from 2.5%. But exempting certain spending that shouldn't count against a 2.5%, that's always in play. That's always in play. I mean, again, we can work with one another, and I'm happy to file this amendment to the budget, either in Section 2, which is the general appropriations, or as part of the education line items, or as an outside section, to actually go in and change Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 29, 21(c). So that can be done. The question is, do we have the votes fired in the House and Senate?
Right, right.
And the governor has a shot at it as well, whether or not he's going to veto that. And then we have the last say on overrides. Unlike my house. I'm the father of three daughters, and the only place that I have a vote in is the Massachusetts House of Representatives. It's not my house. No veto power, nothing. Thank you for the question, too.
Yeah. Would it be, Madam Chair, is it permissible to ask a question outside of the run of the budget, just while we have the representative here?
I think so.
And I don't want to eat up more time, because I know we have a very packed. This is a, if you've watched our meetings, you know this is the hill I apparently am going to climb and die on. I'm just curious if there's ever been any discussion about looking at graduation requirements, specifically for special education students who go to school every day. They have to do, in many cases, an alternative assessment in terms of the MCAS, but do not get a graduate diploma. They get a certificate of attendance, which strikes me as, I'm just not sure how we're getting around these separate, but not, you know, I don't understand how that is acceptable. And I just-
The equal protection clause?
Yes. I'm just curious if there's ever been any discussion of looking at that.
Well, you know, and it probably is a violation of the equal protection, both perhaps on the federal level, on, you know, the Fifth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment that applies to states. And usually, you either recognize that and fix it legislatively, or the judicial branch steps in and say, hey, we got a lawsuit, we have a 10 taxpayer lawsuit, kind of like McTuffey versus Robinson, right? Which led to, what, $100 billion now in state increased spending. Sometimes it takes, and that was only five plaintiffs in that matter. Sometimes it takes a lawsuit to point out the obvious and then hand the bill to the legislature. That's, you know, we weren't doing all this stuff on Chapter 70 as an institution until the Commonwealth was sued, and it really lifted, and from Article 5, the words that John Adams, who wrote it back in 1780, and looked at the word cherish. And back then, the justices on the Supreme Judicial Court had to get an 18th century, you know, dictionary to find out what Mr. Adams meant. And I have no doubt, Abigail Adams probably wrote it for him. But it said, back then, the dictionary said it meant financial support. And they quote, that case quotes sentences from what was written by John Adams himself. "We must cherish the orphanages." That means financial support. So was that one word that made us, made us, as an institution, spend more than $100 million since that case? And that duty doesn't go away. There's still actually a single justice monitoring whether or not the legislature is doing their job. So again, I go to my healthy distrust of my colleagues. So that's why, you know, we did child of school, we did, and then didn't fully reimburse it. We did sped, circuit breaker, and then walked away from full reimbursement. And, you know, the governor signs Student Opportunity Act. We did it at the English High School. Mayor Marty Walsh was there and very grateful, but after the limelight on that issue fades, so does the money. You know, and it's our duty to make sure, our duty, you know, to monitor. We don't need a judge to monitor the behavior of the legislature. And that takes many times, it's difficult, because, and I filed, I filed the transportation, I filed that 10 years ago to fix that formula, and it was a glaring inadequacy and flaw. And it was a glaring inadequacy and flaw in the, in the existing program. So, are people talking about it at the State House about violating the Equal Protection Act? No, no, they're not.
Could they?
So, it's good that you raised that issue.
So, could we talk about it?
Absolutely.
I think, I think just, I mean, I, I, I can't, you know, garner a lawsuit, but with, with you here in front of us, I think I personally would just love it if that was something that, that could be looked at or could be brought up, at least as a discussion.
Absolutely. And I'll, I'll raise that when I, when I was Chair of Ways and Means Committee, I started, members of the House didn't have automatic meetings with the chair of the House Ways and Means Committee. So, I started this tradition where you get at least 30 minutes to lay out your priorities. And I will certainly bring that to the Chair of the House Ways and Means Committee, Aaron Michael Woods.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question, Maura. Any other questions for Representative Rogers tonight?
Yeah, if I, yeah. Can I piggyback on what Maura was speaking to? I think there, there, it's really about the MCAS testing and accountability system that needs to be looked at with new, fresh eyes. And there are two populations of students that it is not a fair system for. And it's the students who are, you know, severely disabled and the students who are English language learners. Right now, I, I had an ESL meeting with all our ESL teachers today, and unanimously, they were saying there's, these kids are over-tested. And I realize, you know, from accountability point of view, it's a balancing act, because we need to be held accountable to make sure that those students continue to grow. And that's important, we don't want to lose that. However, the, it, it, it's out of balance for those population of kids. The LL students have to take an access test, and it takes up a huge amount of time that, that is basically lost instructional time for our ESL teachers. And then they also have to take the MCAS test. So, these kids are being tested more, the LL kids are being tested more than any other student in the district. And that's not quite right, you know? So, those are the two, I think, points that really need to be addressed by the state legislature and those who are building the accountability system.
Thank you. And as in the past, Norwood has, has always been a leader on bringing these, these ideas to the, to the fore, and then we fix them accordingly. So, you know, thanks for articulating that, and look forward to continuing the dialogue on that. And I think, now, thinking back in my memory, I think I misspoke about the $100 million. It was $100 billion more since Macduffy, so. But then again, it, it takes meetings like this. It takes your leadership in this district on behalf of the schoolchildren we mutually represent to bring these attention, these ideas, these problems to, to my attention. And your, our Senate partner, Mike Rush, is extremely attentive. Him, him being a former teacher himself, is extremely attentive to these types of issues. Education continues to be his priority. And he apologizes because of a conflict, scheduling conflict. His district is four times bigger than, bigger than our House district is. So, he's all over the place. So, he apologizes and also looks forward to continuing his partnership with all of you.
Wonderful. Well, should you be inclined to stay and hear more about the needs of Norwood? That is coming up next in our Special Education update. But if you can't, I would be happy to have a phone call with you afterwards or if you need certain data, or if the committee and the administrators want to write a letter, I'd be happy to compile it, because I think we talk about a lot of challenges, and we do the very best we can, but sometimes our hands are tied with mandates. And we all want, including yourself, the very best for our students. So, I would be happy to talk to you further.
McKinney Vento was an unfunded mandate. I mean, it was adopted during the Ron administration, you know, federal law, but we adopt it and we don't fund it. So, Tom Stanley, the rep, my colleague in the House, and I sent a letter to the state auditor Suzanne Bobbin. Said, is this an unfunded mandate? We think it is. And to the auditor's credit, came back and said, it is. So, I met with the Chairman of Ways and Means, Brian Dempsey, who was the chairman at the time, and said, look at this, we're unfund, this is an unfunded mandate certified by our state auditor. We, and that, that meant, that went about $80,000 to Norwood alone, roughly. Which I don't have to tell you, again, how significant that money is to our schoolchildren, our teachers and our administrators. So, that's something we continue to sort of push House leadership on. And there's so many unfunded mandates anyway. And just discovering what, what type of unf, are they state mandates? Are they, is it judicial, quasi-judicial? Are these federal mandates? And there's more than 100. I don't have to tell Dr. Hoffman how ridiculous at times trying to comply with these. I authored, I was the first one to author the anti-bullying law. And I remember saying to my colleagues, we have to fund that, and we have to fund teacher training. Oh, no, well, let's just do it, and we'll worry about that later. And that's, that's the attitude. And so, pushing back on these ideas is something, you know, I love to do. So, working with you, we'll, we'll pick off certain problems at a time. We'll try to apply the pressure on Beacon Hill to, to fix those, those problems.
I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you're saying that. I could start an email tonight when I finally get home from here, or a list for everybody else to chime into, but I think you will definitely hear from us, and we thank you for your partnership and your advocacy.
Thank you. Each member gets a copy of the governor's budget, but I want to give you my copy. I can just go online at my desk. So, I just want to give you my copy, and I'll leave it Karen, that's okay?
That sounds perfect, yes, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, keep up the great work.
Thank you. You as well. So, I did warn the committee that tonight was going to be longer and heavy. So, just remember, I did warn you. But Ms. Mina, thank you so much for being here tonight. We've seen Ms. Mina before, our Student Services Director. She's been meeting a lot with Dr. Thompson, I've been meeting with her. She came to our Budget Subcommittee last week with Maya and I, and we felt like we really needed to get her here to provide to the full committee a number of updates, but also to inform our community on some very important issues.
Thank you. Good evening. So, this evening, I hope to touch on three major components of the work that's happening in the Office of Student Services currently. First is an update on the out-of-district budget, as it has had a major shift from the projected budget. The second is some work we've been doing around specialized program spaces and some concerns that have arisen and proposed changes for the FY, uh, school year 2021. And the third is to sort of talk about some of the budget requests that I know later in the evening, Karen will be talking to you about the very preliminary budget, but sort of what the Student Services request will be, since I am here tonight, in case there are any questions for me around that. So, to begin with the out-of-district budget, I have shared with you all sort of the breakdown analysis that we've done. But from the big picture perspective, the FY '20 projected out-of-district budget was 5.2, about 5.2 million. And that was for 49 students and three placeholders for anticipated placements. The approved budget was 5.5. The difference there, which Karen and I have been working, as you all know, Karen and I came in trying to make heads and tails of those who were here before us. The actual FY '20 projected has student names behind it. The budgeted amount was the amount that was in the budget. So, I, doing a name-to-name comparison to actuals now, I had to take the, the projected from what the department had to the actuals now, so that I could do an actual name-by-name comparison versus the number that was in the budget. So, the FY '20 actual budget, as we speak, as of the 29th this week, was 6.2, accounting for 62 students who are currently out of district. And this is a very fluid number. As I go through this and explain, we have students who are currently in the process, so this number is constantly changing for us, yes?
Can I, I understand it's still changing-
Yes.
But I just want to make, clarify, are we, is what you were saying is, as of the end of January, we were projecting that through June 30th, we would spend roughly 6.3 million?
No.
We've spent 6.3 million to date?
To date. That, uh, in fiscal year '20? It's encumbered, 6.3 is encumbered.
So, if a, if a student is in a placement right now-
Yes.
And we know that we're going to have to pay $60,000 for them, tuition for the entire year-
It's encumbered.
We've encumbered the 60-
Correct.
So, so this is not, so assuming no other students come in-
Right.
We would expect that we're going to spend 6.3 million dollars this year.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, because I get to the pending-
We're not saying we spent 6.3 million dollars and that only got us through January.
No, 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 no.
We'll have another, like, 4 million to go.
This is encumbered through, yeah, yeah. No, I'm sorry, this is encumbered.
I mean, it's bound enough already, but-
No, this is what's encumbered through June 30th.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, so what has changed? So, we, we dove into this to do the analysis of what's changed, to really understand what are the driving factors in what has changed. So, the major drivers break down into pretty much four categories. The first being students who were budgeted for, but their tuition has changed. So, there are different factors as to why their tuition has changed. So, they may have been budgeted for a day placement and needed residential, or they could have been in a collaborative and have changed now to a day placement. So, there's 30 students for which something has changed in their placement that has caused their tuition to change. And that's a factor of 422,000. Now, the line beneath that, 111,000 of that is a factor of, on August 1st, we were notified that OSD had authorized a price change for one of the schools that we have six students at. Those six students factored the cost of 111,000 dollars. That was something unforeseen that we had absolutely no control over. So, OSD approved a price change, we just happen to have six students there. So, those six students was a $111,000 change.
Laura, can you clarify, what is OSD?
The Office of, oh, boy. It's the Office of Special Service Division, thank you, Service Division. They set the prices for all of the out-of-district placements.
Okay.
Basically, the schools put into OSD, they either approve-
Their programs, yes.
They approve the program and approve the price they're setting. Just to be clear, the 111 is part of the 422?
It is. Yep. I just wanted to show that a significant portion of that was-
Laura, one thing on those rate changes, oftentimes, it's reconstruction they have to do, and oftentimes, it takes like three years. So, I don't think it's that you don't know that immediately for a reason. It, it takes a while to go through that system, to get that rate change from the state.
The second factor are students that were not budgeted for, that are, then need out-of-district placements. So, we did an analysis of figuring out what changed that caused them to go out of district. So, the reason that number is not higher is that we did have three placeholders in, in the projected budget. So, we had three spots that were held at $85,000 a slot. So, really, that's only a factor of seven students. And so, two students went from an inclusion placement to out-of-district. One was, for medical reasons, they went out of district. One was, two students went from one of our in-district programs to out-of-district. Three students went to an extended evaluation, which is actually a 40-day placement at an out-of-district, where they do a pretty intensive evaluation to determine what the students' needs are. Sometimes those students then go on to require more intensive programming out of district. Other times, those students come back to us in district, and we have a better understanding of what their needs are. So, that tends to be about $12,000 to $15,000. So, it's not the cost of a full placement. And then Chapter 222 is for disciplinary reasons. So, talking about pending placements, so this is what we anticipate to continue, will still be cost from now until June. So, for the FY '20, we are currently anticipate five more students needing to potentially access out-of-district programs. And that number, the 189,000, is prorated. So, that's what we anticipate their programs to cost from now until June 30th. The impact of that, though, on the FY '21, for the full cost of their year program, is thus almost $600,000. Yes?
There's a, a section here, FY '20 OOD budget impact for move-ins. There's six students and then three. You sort of, you, you kind of went from the Chapter 222 down to the pending. I'm just curious about that section in there in the middle.
We're not looking at the same thing as you.
Yeah. We don't have-
This is my presentation, that's the cover sheet that I gave you all.
Right, I'm just, I don't understand what-
I'm getting to that.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. We'll just be happy to look at the same thing.
So, and all five of the students that are pending right now are from in-district programs that are, are needing to seek out of district, more intensive programming. Here's the move-ins. So, as I mentioned earlier, you know, this is very fluid, and meetings are happening daily. We're getting phone calls about students moving in. And weekly, since the break, I have had a new student move in with an IEP that has required at least in-district programming. So, the move-ins that we are looking at right now, this is from July 1st until now, we have had six students move in district at the, that have required out-of-district programming at the cost of $430,000. And in addition to that, because of the move-in law, so students who move in after October, if they are out of district, their home, the district from which they move is still financially responsible, although we are programmatically responsible. So, we are currently programmatically responsible for three students that we will become fiscally responsible for July 1st, and that's an additional $586,000. So, from July, we have had nine students move in at the cost of $1 million in out-of-district placements.
Laura, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
I believe if students then with the move-in law move in between April and June, the district has to carry them next school year as well.
Correct.
But we would track that, so we would have it on our horizon then for FY '22.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
But we don't get circuit breaker reimbursement until the year after.
You don't get circuit breaker reimbursement until you actually pay for it back.
Right, okay.
So, we've got a full year, but we have to budget for them and pay for them to go.
Before we're reimbursed.
Right.
So, action steps, just as we continue to monitor this, you know, we look at our, we are watching our in-district programs, since we do typically see that as a place that students' needs outgrow our programs, and they need to access out-of-district programs. We're working closely with our out-of-district coordinator. I meet with her weekly to talk about the students that are on the caseloads, what is shifting there. Each new IEP that comes into the district now goes, I review each and every one of them. This is a level of oversight the department has not previously had, and I think it's a little bit uncomfortable for some of the staff in the department, because this is not something that has typically happened before. As well as anybody, any students in district that are being recommended to move to a program, I am going out and observing the students now before they are being approved to move to an in-district program, because our in-district programs are full, and moving students into them is, it's kind of like the overflow. We're so tight in district, and then if we have move-ins coming in or whatnot, the overflow is to go out of district. So, we're watching all of this very carefully. And it's to a level of, I, some would say, micromanagement that has an ex- And it's to a level of, I, some would say, micromanagement that hasn't existed previously.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
About my out-of-district placement? I know we're looking at, as you said, you know, three students, talking about five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. These are, you know, really large amounts of money.
Yes.
Can, I don't want you to ask, I'm not asking any specific questions about these particular students, but I understand that some of these students on our out-of-district things are in residential placements that cost more than two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yes.
Can you talk about some of the needs that might be facing students that would send them to a program like that to just kind of help the general public understand what are we talking about when we're talking about out-of-district placements?
So it, you know, when we talk about a student who requires an out-of-district placement, we're always talking about the nature and severity of their disability. And safety is always the number one thing that we're looking at when we're looking at the need for an out-of-district placement. So when you seek an out-of-district placement for a student, it's typically because they have outgrown, or, or, yeah, outgrown the resources that we can provide in district. When you get to the level of needing like residential care, it's typically because either the medical needs of twenty-four-seven care are beyond what can be provided in a home, or the behavioral needs are such that they are not safe in their home. And therefore, in order for them to be able to access their education, they are required to be under the care of an educational placement twenty-four-seven. They're significant.
Oh, no, wait.
I was just gonna say, and some of these, these residential programs are year-round?
Yes, correct. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day. And some of the placements that we're talking about that reach that three hundred thousand mark, there's the tuition, but then students require a one-on-one staff member twenty-four hours a day. So that's an additional cost above and beyond the cost of the tuition. And that may be for medical reasons, that may be for behavioral reasons. It can fall into different categories.
Thank you.
Can you explain how medical insurance interacts with that cost?
Doesn't.
So there's literally no other way to pay for this that we could explore?
Not what?
I know we get Medicaid reimbursements for some services, but there's no other alternatives that we could explore?
Not, not age three to twenty-two.
Thank you.
Other questions for Laura, or would we like her to continue?
The one thing I do just want to add is there is a mechanism through circuit breaker to apply for extraordinary relief. We have notified the state that we will be applying. The good news is there is extraordinary relief. The not-so-good news is we ran the figures today, and we're about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars off from qualifying at this point in time. So the figure is you have to be a hundred and twenty-five percent over your last year's circuit breaker claim. So chances are, we may very well be there. But as of today, and Karen's and my figuring, we don't quite make the threshold yet.
How much, a hundred and twenty-five thousand? And?
A hundred and twenty-five percent over.
But how much off did you say we were?
We're about a hundred.
A hundred and fifty thousand.
Which is two percent?
And.
I didn't bring that for you.
I have it here. Hang on one second.
It's on your spreadsheet. Do you have it?
I have it. Here it is. We need to be at, at six point two, four or five million. And we're at, we're at six point oh-nine-five.
So we're like in the?
Two hundred thousands.
The committee knows I can't do math, but we're like in the five to ten percent range of not meeting it. So in other words, we're at maybe a hundred and fifteen percent over what we were at last year? And we still don't qualify for extraordinary relief? Those aren't really questions.
That's.
Real quick, so I know you had included me on the email that you sent to Desi earlier that we were looking into applying for extraordinary relief. And I saw the response, but now I'm not remembering. You have to apply by the end of March?
Right, yes.
So if we don't go up this a hundred and fifty thousand by the end of March, we cannot apply?
We will go through the exercise of applying anyway.
Okay.
Because of just the equations and the factoring and all of that, we will, we will do it anyways.
Okay.
It also gives us a head start on the actual circuit breaker then at the end of the year. But we will, we will, we've put them on notice. We will go through all of the actions of applying.
Okay. And if we don't qualify by the end of March, what is the process done? Like you can't apply again until next fall?
Next year.
A whole year from now?
We would just apply for, we would just do the regular circuit breaker.
Right.
Right. But I always advise Laura too, that you should always apply for that extraordinary relief. And then also, it will, it will give, give us a good idea with our budgeting on how much circuit breaker we probably will get.
Yeah.
There is a little bit of money that at the end of the year, that you get extra with special education that we're not aware yet of what that will be. I mean, we have gotten from the Department of Education, they, we're getting two million, eighty-three thousand, nine forty-nine right now, but that doesn't include that additional, there's some additional monies that comes in at the end of the year, which we won't know till later on. You all, I'm not sure, there are some special indicators that you do get a hundred percent circuit breaker, and I'm not sure if any of them qualify, and that would be abandoned homeless or state wards.
Yeah, my. We don't, we don't have any that qualify under those categories.
So just wanted to talk a little bit about the extraordinary relief again. So the circuit breaker money that comes in, we, we spend money, we spent money last year in FY nineteen. Based on that money, we submitted paperwork, and then they give us a circuit breaker reimbursement for FY twenty.
Right.
And that's that two point, almost two point one million dollars that Karen was talking about. But circuit breaker reimbursements, we are allowed to carry over by one year. And this is one of the reasons why it's really important to have that carryover balance, because if our circuit, if our out-of-district tuition goes up by less than twenty-five percent, we are expected to be able to cover that in that year. If it goes up by more than twenty-five percent, then the state comes in and helps you. But that almost means that you need a twenty-five percent contingency built into your budget somewhere. And that's where that circuit breaker
Yes.
reserve helps. If you can not spend it down completely, if you still have some in the bank from year to year, then you have that cushion that you need.
Absolutely.
I mean, you were lucky enough that in your last year, you, the beginning balance you had as of July was one million, six hundred and four. So you were lucky that you had held that, held on to that, because you would have been in some trouble this year.
Yeah.
But that's something that Dr. Thompson and our budget subcommittee last year, my, really advocated for. Very much so, to hold on to that and not spend it down more. So thank you for doing that.
Well, again, my fear was you have kids, I should have never said it out loud, because my fear was you had kids move in and needed residential placements at two hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand apiece, and that has.
I keep being told this is a unique year, but.
Yeah.
Every year is unique.
They keep telling me this, but I don't know.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other? So one of the other projects that we have been working on lately is the actual physical spaces that our specialized programs occupy at the elementary level. This year, we are engaged in our self-assessment for our tiered focus monitoring. This is the, the new version of the coordinated program review that previously took place every six years with the Department of Education. And this was like the big audit that happened for special education. They've renamed it, and they have sort of shifted how it happens now. And it's gonna happen on a more cyclical basis. There's two cohorts that will occur. And there were multiple indicators that the special education departments had to report on graduation, preschool, evaluation timelines, things like that. They've now incorporated those into the process, trying to make it all a little bit more streamlined and not so much, so many different projects that we're having to report to the state at different times. We are scheduled to have our onsite next year with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. As part of that, we are doing our self-assessment this spring, which we will have to, there's multiple things that we have to do. You'll, I'm sure you'll be hearing more from us about this, because some of it has to do with policies and other things like that. But one of the things that we began talking about in preparation for this is our actual physical spaces, because they will come to an onsite and look at where our programs and special education services are being provided. With that, the five elementary principals and I and Dr. Thompson have been talking about some of the concerns that we have, as well as the fact that some of our programs are growing, and we don't have the space in the elementary schools to accommodate them. So we have been working since October on a proposed plan to engage in shifts of programs this summer, over the summer, coming up, the summer of twenty. And, you know, looking at our district plan, just reminding everybody that one of our, our goals within the district plan is to create facilities that are centers for innovation and comprehensive education experiences that will foster and promote problem-solving and creativity for both staff and students within a safe environment. And we really highlight the safe environment, because some of the things we're gonna look at today really border on whether or not these are truly safe environments for all of our students. So some of our leading concerns, the picture you're looking at here is actually the school adjustment counselor's therapeutic milieu at the Callahan. She actually services students in a hallway. And as you can see, that's the sprinkler control room, an electrical room, that she has made the best of the space so that she can service students right there in the hallway. But I'm gonna walk through each of the concerns we have, and then sort of get into what the proposed plan is, and talk about the feasibility and planning stages at this point. So the PAX program is a program that services students with our most significant disabilities in town. It's students with autism, pretty significant global delays. And currently, the program is split between the Prescott and the Oldham. So our K to two program is at the Prescott, and our three to five is at the Oldham. It is the only elementary program, or quite honestly, the only elementary population in the entire town that we actually ask to have to transition schools halfway through their elementary experience. As well as, we are concerned about the fact that the teachers don't have a cohort or a colleague to depend on. All the other programs in town are together. They're able to pool their resources. They're able to pool. The related service providers are able to work together. This program is actually split in two different locations. And anytime we ask related service providers to actually travel, we're losing service time in their day. So we really want to make sure that we can get this program together in one location. The Prescott, and one of the concerns is, we did look into the Prescott being the location. They do not have an additional classroom due to their enrollment. As you all know, the cottage has already been added, so they do not have an additional classroom to take on the second classroom. The LEAP at the Bulge, as I like to say, is growing by leaps and bounds. This program has, has grown as its oldest cohort has grown. Those students are now going to age to the point where we will be beyond the forty-eight month age span that's allowed. So we are gonna need two sections of the LEAP program, build it, and they will come. We still have students coming up from the Willet that will require this type of programming. So we will need two sections. The Bulge does, again, because of enrollment, does not have room to have two sections, two classrooms. So we will need two classrooms for the LEAP program.
Laura, can you remind everybody, the LEAP program is the global delays?
Yes, yep. Thank you. It's all second nature to me. And then the TASK program is this program that supports our social emotional students who need support with social emotional learning. And currently, the TASK program is located in the second floor. I don't want to say the basement, but the second floor of the Callahan. And there are a lot of safety concerns with the location of the program. The majority of the general education classrooms and inclusion and life of the school happen on the first floor. When students are dysregulated and need to access the actual therapeutic milieu, they need to be escorted down two flights of stairs. There are some pretty significant safety risks for both staff and students in transitioning down the stairs. As well as I showed you in that original picture, the school adjustment counselor's therapeutic milieu for these students is in a hallway. It's, there's no confidentiality. There, it's a very public space. And there's real no, really no safe calling space for these students to access. And here's some of the pictures. So they have to actually access two flights of stairs to get downstairs. That's actually Mrs. Lee, the school adjustment counselor. That is the table that she has to work from. And the fourth picture is actually the teacher's desk and workspace for the TASK program. So issues that we're really looking to remedy are that the TASK program needs to be in a building or a location with no stairs. That the PAX program is together in one building, so they need two classrooms with bathrooms, given the nature of the students that they're working with. The LEAP program needs to be together in one building with two classrooms. And the Prescott unfortunately can only hold a program with one classroom. So with all of these factors, the principals and I sliced the pie pretty much every way we could possibly think. And the action steps we've taken to date, we initially met in October to talk about this. And we proposed some options back in October at the larger admin meeting. We discussed it again in November. And now, in the beginning of December, the elementary principals, Dr. Thompson and I met again to vet some of the feedback that we got, talk about potential options. We discussed it again with the larger group. There've been a lot of conversations about this. Right before winter break, we shared a memo with you all, school committee, about our thoughts, some of the things that, you know, factors to be considered. Some of our concerns were, things that still needed to be vetted and talked about. Then we determined in January what our plan, the best plan we thought moving forward would be. We scheduled a meeting on the twenty-ninth to speak with any of the educators that it would directly impact, to be able to have one-on-one meetings with them of who we thought, teachers that might be moved, or teachers whose spaces might be impacted by the move. And then on the thirtieth, I met with the elementary staff to share with them the proposed plan. And the proposed plan is that the PAX program, all levels, would move to Oldham. The LEAP program would remain at the Bulge. The PLC program would remain at Cleveland, where it is now. LBLD program, which is a one-classroom, one-section program, would move to the Prescott. And that the TASK program, which is at the Callahan currently on the first level, would actually move up to the library space, which would eliminate the need of them to access stairs. And the library would actually take their space downstairs, which I've come to learn, the library actually used to be downstairs.
Oh, I did not know.
Yeah. So we've met with the parties involved. We still have a lot of work to do around this. We're now in the sort of feasibility and planning stages of figuring out all of the working pieces around this. There's a lot of, you know, there's the human aspect of this, of honoring the feelings that, you know, that, you know, come with all of this potential change. We have staff that we're working with, related service providers that are going to be impacted, teachers that are going to be impacted, families that are going to be impacted, students that are going to be impacted, staff who have worked in buildings for many, many years that programs are now going to be shifted. Certainly, there's the political aspect, then, no, no first-year director wants to be dealing with moving programs. This is sort of like a superintendent who has to deal with redistricting. Not what, at all, what I want to be dealing with in my first year, but I have to keep reminding myself that we're, this is what's the best for kids, and we're moving these programs forward, and this is what we need to be doing. Capital-wise, we, I'll be doing walkthroughs with Paul Ricardi and all of the educators of the spaces that it impacts, so that we can be making our lists of things that need to happen, you know, the cubicles that need to get moved, things like that, spaces that need to be set up, so we make sure that the learning spaces are ready to go for the fall. And economic, minor things, transportation, there will be minor transportation changes, you know, this, all of the students who attend the PACS program at Prescott right now are not Prescott district students, so they're all being transported anyway. They'll now be transported to Oldham, things like that, that we still need to work out in the details. I'll be working, meeting with all of the related service providers, so that we can reconfigure caseloads, things like that, as students shift to different buildings. So I keep reminding everyone, I shared this with everyone on the first, the first day of my presentation to staff, and I keep reminding everybody that not every storm is meant to wreak havoc, but sometimes they just clear the path for the future. So, speaking of the future, budget requests. So, I just wanted to share a little bit of my thinking, and I had shared this with the chair, the chair, a little bit about how I approached some of my budget requests for this year. You know, first and foremost, thinking about the fact, were there any questions about the move before I move on to the...
Do you have a question, Mara?
Yeah, I'm, I certainly understand the rationale, and I, one thing I do want to publicly say, you had said earlier that there are concerns about safety, and I think that any concerns about safety come up, we should obviously take in the highest priority, but I do want to be clear, just because I think this is a public meeting, that no student at this moment is unsafe, and no one within our school community, teachers, staff, administrators would ever put a student in an unsafe situation. I think it's, it's important to clarify that right off the bat. My concern is, is mainly regarding space. I was, while you were giving your presentation, I pulled out our, our numbers for next year, or for the current year as of February 3rd, 2020. And I, I think the idea of putting the PACS in one building, it's, it's logical, or I don't want to be asking our two, you know, some of our students who are the most, you know, impacted and, and sort of fragile, to be making a, a transition. But I'm just curious about the thinking in terms of space, because currently, Prescott has 266 students and the Oldham has 255, and I looked at the breakdown in terms, excuse me, of the, the classrooms, and my concern is sort of around the, the fourth grade, that we're, we're going to have to add a classroom as they move up into the, the fifth. And I'm just curious, how can the Oldham hold that additional program?
I can speak a little bit about space. I, I, I hear you. I think that, as you've all heard me say before, I think space is an equity issue across the district and the five schools. I do think if you look at access to a library, a music room, and an art room, I wish every single elementary school could have one room for each of those things. Oldham does right now, and Cleveland does right now. That is it. Callahan shares in the basement, a music and art room. Prescott art, I think, is in the hallway. Bulge is sharing rooms in the basement. So when you're looking at where can a group of the Prescott PACS kids go, I do understand space-wise, why it would be Oldham. I wish it didn't mean that art, music, library doesn't have to somehow be reconfigured, but I think it's really the only school other than Cleveland that has that ability to reconfigure its special rooms. And as we're going to talk about soon with the projections, yes, the fifth grade at Oldham is a concern, but the first grade at Cleveland is a potential concern. So the Cleveland might be absorbing one of those special rooms for other reasons.
Right. And, and just to, you know, go, go back to the Oldham, there is a room right now that is used, that's set up as a computer room, that is not really being used consistently as a computer lab room, now that we're adding more Chromebooks, so that might become another classroom. Maybe through scheduling, the room that is used, we have one room that's art and music, and it's scheduled, so it's either art or music during the day, and two teachers share that, and that opens another classroom. So that's part of the ongoing piece that still needs to be done, but it's an excellent question.
Did you have another question, Lori?
No.
Anybody else have any other questions for Lori on the elementary shift?
Can I just make one more, one more comment on, on the, on the move? You know, with, you know, and I'm still going to call it an audit, because that's the old term. So, if we don't, so, and like I said in the memo, we, we have two choices. We can be proactive and do this in a thoughtful way over the summer, or we can wait till we're visited, they require that we change right away, and we know how well mid-year moves go. All right? And, you know, you know, we're not necessarily having the space open to build what needs to be built as well. So that, my concern is if we do not, you know, be proactive over the summer, and we're in a reactive state, we're still in the same situation, we've put actually more work on our special education staff with all of the certifications and paperwork that would come with a sighting, as well as having to make a move right away, as soon as possible. And we all know that that is problematic around the holiday break, the December break, which means that we would be in bigger trouble if we're not in a position to do this. So I just want to make that, that clear. Ultimately, it would be better if we were doing a big, giant resorting of, of some sort, because we have all sorts of challenges going on, but I don't know if we have the capacity to do all of that, so.
Would you like to go back to the, the future requests coming in our way?
Sure. So, thinking about the, the department in totality and the requests, you know, I, I continue to come back to the fact that we have a 20.7% eligibility for special education, and thinking about what are the components that go into that? And really, you know, general education curriculum, our response to intervention, SST, and the special education referral process, all build up into the referrals to special education. And, and considering the evaluation process, you know, it's about consistency in process, practice, and approach. And then what are the influencers that, you know, our team chairs and teachers are, that should say battery, I apologize, battery of assessments, and then our interventions. So, with that in mind, thinking about what our budget requests are, I know there was a request last year, and it, and it was in the budget for a PACS teacher at the high school. Again, this year, we will need it. We have students transitioning on this next year, with many more coming the year after. The LEAP teacher, as I mentioned earlier, the cohort is, is aging up. We need the teacher to go with that. The pair goes along with that program. The BCBA, I shared with you all the caseloads.
Can you define that?
Huh?
Can you find, define BCBA?
Sure, I'm sorry, a board-certified behavior analyst. And currently, our elementary BCBA has a caseload of over 80 students. District standard is about 25. I'm, I'm sorry, not district standard. Industry standard.
Ms. Simeon, could you, what does a BCBA do?
So, a BCBA is a behavior analyst. They help support students who are struggling with behaviors. So, they consult to all of our specialized programs, as well as they carry a caseload of students whose IEPs. They do functional behavior assessments for students. They consult to classrooms, providing teachers with consultation around how to do positive behavior, intervention, those sort of, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Without getting too technical in what it is. It's not just ABA. A lot of times, people hear about applied behavior analysis. That's, it's not just that, but it is also that. So currently, our BCBA works with elementary, as well as the Willet, as well as the LMPA. Her caseload is too big for her to effectively be making a difference anywhere. This year, we have actually had to bring in two different consultants, one to work with the Callahan task program, and one to work with the Prescott PACS program, because the needs there were so significant, and her caseload was so stretched. There's a request for an SLP district-wide, again, for caseload numbers, both at the Coakley as well as at the preschool, their caseloads are approaching 70 and 60.
Speech-language pathologist?
Sorry, speech and language pathologist, yes. A mental health worker for the high school to support the task program, which is our social-emotional program. This one, as we heard earlier about the fluidity of what's happening with the opportunity, the money coming in from the governor, this is one place that we may be investigating, potentially being able to build into that plan. Psychologists district-wide, I was crunching numbers before I came here earlier. We, each of our psychologists, by the 80th day of school, had conducted 73 psych evaluations, which means they had tested students, written reports, and attended meetings. So, they are pretty much doing an evaluation a day, which, when we're trying to really look at eligibility and really supporting students and staff around those needs, that is a very high number. The 4.23 professionals district-wide are attached to different IEPs and programs. And then, the district registrar's in purple, because that's an ask from all of us around centralizing registration here at the Savage Building. Any questions?
I have a question in a second. I just need a second to finish my math.
Yeah.
Sorry, someone else can go while I finish my adding.
Do you want to calculate?
No, it's just, the numbers are in multiple places, so I'm just trying to...
Are you trying to add all that up?
So I just kind of did, so for, I'm sorry, I'm kind of jumping. You were just talking about the special education and, and the number of, the requests and, and the positions that we have. In the packet that you gave us, you gave us something that I personally have been asking for, for most of my time on the committee, so I'm very excited to see it, and that's the special education teacher and related service provider caseloads.
Yeah.
I have never been given that, so thank you. I did the, the math very quickly on the inclusion in the elementary programs, and I'm very concerned. At the Prescott, there are 28 students. At the Oldham, there are 51. Between, is it two teachers? Between the Cleveland, it's 35, and that's where I ran out of time with my additions. So I'm just curious, is that, because they include in Oldham, and then include in Oldham, include in Cleveland, include in Cleveland, are those two separate classrooms? Are those two separate teachers?
Caseloads. It's by caseload.
Right, so I'm just saying, if it's 51, but it's listed twice, so I'm just trying to figure out, is that two people doing that job, or one person? Do you see what I'm saying?
So if it's, so where it says Oldham and Oldham, it's one teacher and one teacher. So I didn't, I did it by...
Those are two teachers.
Two teachers.
I see.
So, in each of their caseloads.
So, the total would be the 35?
Yeah.
But it's split between two? That's just what I couldn't follow here?
Yep.
Okay.
So like, at Oldham, one has 20 and one has 31, at the time when I pulled this.
Can I just, for a point of order, can somebody tell me exactly which sheet you guys referred to?
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at this.
There's two separate packets that came around this. Was that in the...
It's in the blue folder.
Folder?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. This one?
Yeah.
Okay, just double checking.
And I guess part of my question is, is this something, I mean, as we're about to transition into talking about budget, is this something that's tenable? I mean, are all of those students...
There's so, there are many factors that need to go into looking at all of this. So, we need to be looking at eligibility rates in buildings, we need to be looking at, there's a lot that goes into all of this. We need to be looking at service models across, across different buildings. We need to be looking at, are we using the same measures for determining eligibility in all of our buildings? Are we using the same standards to determine eligibility? Are we providing the same service frequencies? You know, Dr. Thompson has said this many times, just on the general ed side of curriculum, if we take one elementary student from one elementary school, and we place them in an ele, a different elementary school, is their experience going to be the same? Does that apply true for special education as well? And I, and I can tell you, just from the six months that I've been here, that's not the case. So we have a lot of work to be doing, just within our student services framework, of making sure that our student services are, have some...
Equity?
Uh, equity as well as consistency.
Because I, I guess part of the reason I'm bringing this up is, we had a very long discussion about adjustment counselor caseloads.
Yeah.
We had a very large discussion about ESL caseloads, to make sure everyone was getting serviced. So I'm just looking, like, at the Callahan, for example, one teacher has 32 students, and one has 23, so there are 55 students being serviced at the Callahan. At the Cleveland, you have a .9 with 22 students, so I'm just, I guess, that's part of my question for the, the committee, and larger as we move forward in terms of budgets.
Absolutely.
Are those caseloads cer...
Too big.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
It strikes me that they seem to be...
So, and the other thing we need to look at is workload versus caseload, right? So, are those 32 students being seen one times 30? Or, or could we be looking at Prescott, where there's 15?
Right.
Are those students being seen five times 60? You know, like, there's a workload versus caseload that also needs to be looked at.
Well, I mean, you look at just above, and like, we have inclu, inclusion in Cleveland, 13, inclusion in Prescott, 13, and then at Oldham, it's 31.
Right.
Right. But we also need to look at, like, the, the frequency and duration of the service, not just the number.
Right, but that's my, my, I guess my question is, I, I see...
It's much deeper.
Yes, and I have a hard time believing that the number isn't impacting the frequency and depth of service that's able to be given, if you have 13 students versus...
Agreed.
Right. So I'm just curious, to the administration, is that something that we need to look at in terms of stuffing?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yeah.
So, for tonight, I'm sure Lori is going to be back, because I, with Dr. Thompson's permission, have been meeting with her and talking with her, and have tons of things that you don't yet have, because she's still working on, but we wanted to get the conversation started. It might be helpful, I have notes on this, but I can pass it around if you're okay, like, the overall thinking that you, that you gave me?
Yeah, I've got extras if you want.
Yeah, we can give copies to everybody. I mean, honestly, it was really impressive, Lori, when I met with her two weeks ago, because she's, she's looking at this very holistically, and really getting into a lot of the questions that you are asking, Mara.
Right.
And she's like, really breaking it down by like, the process, the practice, the approach.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I just wasn't finished with my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, and the reason I'm bringing this up is I don't see those up there.
And, and I'll tell you why.
Okay.
I was already told this was too much to ask for. I mean, there's only, right? So there's only, I could come up with five years' worth of asks.
Right.
Right? Because, I mean, I've been here six months, and I'm taking a holistic look at the department. There are a lot of things we need to look at.
Okay.
So I could have come to you with five times that.
Okay.
I need to prioritize what we need right now.
Okay.
I'm still in a, like, reactive mode, I'm not in a, like...
Prolog.
Does that make sense?
No, it does, so basically, these are more tenable at this point than these.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yes.
Okay. And part of the reason, I don't mean to harp on this, but again, this is something we have literally never seen.
Right.
Right.
No, I, no, I get, I get it. And you're going to be sick of data from me.
I doubt it, no.
So, like, I, I need to prioritize what, like, has, like, has to happen, and then we can methodically work through what needs to happen in the future.
Remember when you showed me your binder from your previous place of employment, and I said they were going to love you?
Yeah.
And we're just not there yet, but in her other district, she's done like, five-year analysis of historical trends, and then starting to project five years out, and that just hasn't happened before in, in Norwood. But I think Joan had a question.
Yeah.
I just have a quick, quick clarifying question. For these caseloads, do every single one of these students have an IEP or a 504, or...
All IEPs. All IEPs.
So these don't count?
504s, no.
Folks who have 504s, who may be... Okay.
No, but 504 is, is a regular ed, and the regular ed teacher is supposed to be providing those, those accommodations.
But in her letter, in her letter to us, she did identify that, in addition to these IEPs, there's a hundred and fifty-seven 504 accommodation plans across our district.
I just wanted to, yeah, this is not the full, to Mara's point, this is not...
And just to, and just to follow up on, on Mara's question, most of these asks are expanding programs or, or addressing caseload issues.
Mara, I'm happy to have a conversation here at any time to go through.
Sure.
Okay.
Next fun slide.
Next, professional development. So there are two big things that you'll see in my budget asks around professional development. One of them is actually in Dr. Elias on the general ed side of things, and then one of them is more in the special ed side of things. The first is Wilson reading training, and I worked with Stephanie West on this, in really being able to bring Wilson training to the districts, to get more of our teachers certified in being able to provide that intervention here in the district. Currently, we have to rely on a third-party vendor to provide that intervention in special education. So we would like to, we wrote up a proposal to bring Wilson in this summer. They will train thirty of our teachers in the three-day training, and then as well, train five of our special education teachers, allowing one at each of the elementary schools to go through the Level One certification, which would allow them to then be certified in providing that intervention to students in, in the buildings. The second is, on the special education side of things, is to be doing some IEP writing and training, and really making sure that we're providing observable and measurable IEP goals that are really data-driven for parents. And so that consistently throughout their experience with the Norwood Public Schools, whether they're in preschool or they're in high school, their IEP looks consistent, and they can know where to go for information consistently throughout, so that they're not looking like they have a different document each step along the way. So I just wanted to say, this, I just wanted to give a little shout-out, because this week is National School Counseling Week, and all of our counselors do a good job in helping us understand that it's all about perspective and how you look at things. So I just wanted to share that with you all, and, you know, we have to keep smiling in the Student Services Office, otherwise, you know, they always say, if you don't smile, you're crying. So we always keep a smile on, so I just wanted to leave you all with, with that. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. It's a lot.
I've already asked you a million questions, and we'll touch base more. Was there anything else with the rest of the committee you wanted to ask for tonight?
I just wanted to, I, I wanted to thank you for all of this information, and I wanted to highlight a piece of information that you shared with us, but didn't really discuss specifically, but just the, the size of the Student Services Department in terms of staff.
Huge.
We have a total of a hundred and eight point seven FTEs in professional staff, eighty-three point eight FTEs in paraprofessional staff, for a total of a hundred and ninety-two point five FTEs of the school department fall under the Student Services staff. That's a large number to be overseeing.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. There are a lot of really good people, working really hard.
Absolutely.
Every day.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute...
I was just gonna ask if anybody would like one, so all approve, all in favor.
We'll return in five minutes.
Thank you.
Welcome back to the school committee, welcome back to the school committee meeting of February fifth. Next up on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Thompson?
Yes, so several things. The first is, as you know, we've had an increase in students in the fourth grade at the Oldham. And in fact, I heard from Mr. Griffin that a new student entered the fourth grade yesterday. So we have gone from twenty-eight and twenty-eight to now twenty-nine and twenty-eight. And I did put this memo together and out to you after speaking with Mr. Griffin. We think that the best solution for this would be to hire a third teacher for the fourth grade, have that teacher co-teach in the two classrooms and assist with those. We did discuss with the fourth-grade teachers, Mr. Griffin discussed with the fourth-grade teachers, you know, getting a professional person in there that can actually do some smaller group instruction. And actually, with some of the retirements, it might give us a good chance to give someone a, a trial run. Pro-rated, that would be about twenty thousand four hundred-ish dollars for the rest of the year. Small money, but obviously, getting the bodies to even fit in there. If you had a teacher, they could take him into another room to do some instruction. Things along that line. Aid, that would be difficult to do with. So that is the recommendation that I am bringing to the committee. I, I am not recommending trying to realign and build another classroom at this point. That would be disruptive to the relationships already established in those cohorts, services delivered in those cohorts, et cetera, et cetera. So that is the recommendation I'm bringing to the committee.
There are questions on the memo? Yeah.
What did those classrooms start at, in the beginning of the year?
Uh, ooh, twenty-five, twenty-four.
Twenty-five and twenty-four?
Yeah.
Okay.
And keep in mind that some of those students are not in there full-time, because they're, they go to the PAX program.
Right, remind me, how many is that in each?
Uh, that is on that sheet. If I can find it.
So all twenty-eight of your kids are in there the whole time?
Yeah.
And in the twenty-nine room, I'm sorry?
Two of them are in there.
Are in the room? So, but two of them go out at some point? Okay. So I guess, part of, like, my question is, you know, as a committee, I think it's important that we, you know, think in terms of not just being reactive, but being proactive. So I'm kind of curious, we started off at twenty-five and twenty-four. So already, those numbers are, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can I, that's what, I mean, there, there was an, that was not what we projected last year.
Yeah, no, of course.
There was influx over, over the summer.
Right, no, 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 no.
So we budgeted and left in June, I think it was much lower than that. I think it was twenty-three-ish.
Right, and so then we had more coming.
And there was an influx that had moved into the Oldham district over the summer.
Right.
Which caught everybody off guard.
Right.
Yeah.
So I guess part of my, my concern, not concern, well, yes, I'm concerned. But I'm also just kind of curious, if you look at some of the Oldham numbers, just moving forward, and I'm just using the Oldham, because we have the teachers here, and this is the one that we're looking at as the case study. I just lost that sheet. So we have already, in the third grade, a class of twenty and a class of nineteen. In the one, I'm sorry, that's the second grade. And in the third grade, we've got twenty-three and twenty-four. And that's very similar in terms of the balch. In third grade, we've got two classrooms of twenty-three. So it's, and in, at the Prescott, in the fourth grade, we've got a class of twenty-five and a class of twenty-three. So I guess part of my concern is, I feel like we're kind of bumping up against that, that ceiling, kind of district-wide. So I, I mean, I'm very much in favor of getting someone there to help these, these two teachers. I'm just kind of curious what we can do moving forward to maybe perhaps look at this, so that we don't run into this, this position again. Like, what, are there some, like, measures we could do? Red flags, when they go up, when we go above twenty-six?
Well, there's, there's the long-term solution, and there's the medium solution. I mean, the medium solution is to, I mean, part of why we keep ending up in this, we ended up in this situation with ELLs at the beginning of the year, is, is because we do not do registrations over the summer. We do not have centralized registration, which is why it was brought forth as, as a budget proposal. We shut down our elementary schools. We open them the week before school opens. Everybody comes and registers, and then we go, oh, my. So that is something we need to correct for a couple of reasons, but that is definitely a factor. We don't always see that at the high school and the middle school, because they do have at least one person there during the summer that, that can register people. So that's kind of the medium piece, and the long-term piece is we're going to have to probably look at trying to redistrict these, you know, which is a whole, another mountain to climb. You know, the problem with having only two sections is, when you get four kids, you're not spreading it out over ten or twelve sections of second grade. They're all going into two classrooms. Then we've got the space problem, which, you know, unfortunately, we're, we're on track with building a new middle school, but that's four or five years away. So, I mean, the, I mean, the long-term solution is, is to look at a redistricting plan. I'll be honest with you, I think we would probably need to have someone consult with us to do that in some way, shape, or form, just based on how many balls can we have in the air? But to, but to bring that forward, and that, that would be a major culture change. You heard Lori about not wanting to be a first. No one wants to be a superintendent and talk about redistricting. But that is the reality because of the, of the space crunch.
Yeah.
And then the bad side of that might be many more transitions at the elementary level to get, you know, larger groups of classrooms together. And that's, you can argue against that. You know, there really is not, with small neighborhood schools, there really is not an easy, quick solution to this.
I think something else, just to kind of look forward as we go, and I completely agree with you. I think the idea of a centralized adminis, registration makes all the sense in the world, so we can actually see what's coming and have some time to plan for it, as opposed to being caught and then trying to play catch-up. And I know, you know, the, the third rail of Norwood's school politics is redistricting, but, you know, I like to be hot, so let's just have the conversation. Like, we've got two classrooms, one of twenty-eight and one in twenty-nine that we're talking about, and then in the second grade at the Callahan, there's a class of twelve. That's, I mean, in no way equitable, both to either the staff or the, or the students. And I think something that, I mean, we're about to transit, transition into budget, but I think it's something that we should look at. We added a teacher, forgive me if I'm, if I'm mistaken, but we added a teacher at the Callahan because of those larger space crunches, and we didn't add the Oldham. And if you look at the Oldham and the Prescott, those, I mean, at the Oldham, you have two grades that have three teachers. Every other grade only has two, and that's part of me, because we had a retirement that we didn't replace because of budget issues.
Yeah.
And then you look at the Prescott, and they at least have three grades of three, and only two of, and two of two. Same thing with the Callahan, but the Oldham is the only one that has three grades that are only two teachers.
Right.
So, I mean, it's not surprise, it's not shocking that a large cohort comes in, and then as soon as they get past the second grade, we're gonna have a large problem.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think there's so many moving pieces, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, last year, when we were talking about the potential not getting the override?
Yeah.
I had spent some time creating spreadsheets that I can share with everybody on my computer of how could we redistrict? And one of the first things that we looked at was the Oldham and Callahan. And having one school be one to three, the other school four to five, there's a way to do it. Many people might now hate me for saying that, but there, there's a way to do it. There's, there's a way to redo all of this, to be more equitable across the district. I think that twelve at Callahan, it didn't start at twelve. I'll have to look back at the other sheets. I think it was up to, like, fifteen. And you'll notice the class with twelve also has two task kids. And I do know that the task population is very challenging right now, and I wish Lori was still here and could talk to that. I, I do know the intensity of the needs of the task program has been rapidly increasing there. Not to say it justifies what you're talking about, because I agree. I mean, when I, just say, quickly, take a look. I think our fourth-grade cohort for next year, across the district, is potentially in trouble.
Yeah, it's a large group.
It's a large group. It's my son's cohort. I've been saying this since I've been on it, when he was in first grade, that across the district, our fourth-grade cohort of next year, where there, every single school could very easily be where the Oldham is now in fourth grade next year. You know, when we get to budget in a few minutes, we're gonna be talking about fifth grade at Oldham next year and, and solving this more long-term. But there's also the third grade Cleveland, that could very quickly, with students of twenty-three, you know, go this direction. And then I think you already identified, Mara, the Prescott was going to be the fifth grade next year, and then the Oldham, well, fourth grade across the board. Like, there's just so many places here that I see this conversation, it's gonna repeat. And we know that more students are moving into the Oldham district. We know we're very likely getting more in the Callahan district from Avalon Bay. You know, we do kind of already split students between Prescott and Cleveland and Windsor Gardens. That's something we maybe need to look at more. But every single school's running out of space, I, which is why one of the options on the table with the MSBA is looking at a middle school of five through eight, which in some ways, I still not convinced we, I'm for, like, developmentally, but space-wise, I totally get why we're talking about that. But that's years away. So what, what do we do? What do we do?
Yeah, Ma. And I think we, I've said this before, we may need to consider not having such fixed residential districts. And, because the truth is, we have room in fourth-grade classrooms throughout the district. We just don't have them in fourth-grade classrooms at the Oldham. You know, if you look at the balch, we have fourth grades with fifteen, eighteen, and nineteen kids. At the Callahan, we have twenty and twenty-one. Cleveland is in that twenty, twenty-one range. So it's not that we, as a district, can't absorb more fourth-grade kids.
We just can't at that.
We just can't at that one school. And because we have set ourselves up so that we have very rigid districts, and there's no flexibility, and I remember years ago, there was a similar situation at the Oldham, I believe, where parents were actually asking, like, is there a way I can drive my kid to another school, so that they can be in a classroom with a smaller number of students? And that was denied, because that's not part of our residency policy.
Right.
You know, our policy is very strict, and that may need to be revisited.
Yeah, well, it's, it's so interesting you say that, Ma, because when we were first notified of this growing population at Oldham, the very first thing, I, I called Dr. Thompson, and I said, can't we put them in Callahan? Because again, you guys are so close, the Callahan and the Oldham, you know, physically, where, where they're located, but because of our current policy. So a question for the full committee...
We, we did actually look at where the new students, but they're on the other side of where the Oldham was.
But a question that I would pose now to the full committee, sorry, Joan, is do you want us, as a policy subcommittee, to prioritize looking at this policy?
Yes.
Yes.
I actually am gonna stand up and say no, after I just advocated this. But, but I think, I think Dr. Thompson's right, that this needs to be a larger conversation. I think it's something that's mentioned in our strategic plan, that we need to really review this. And I think we just had a school committee trading last Friday. We listed a half a dozen things that are absolutely, we must do this year. And we had said, like, until we cross something on that off our list, we shouldn't add something new, right? So I'm not saying we shouldn't keep it on the radar. I'm not saying it shouldn't be considered at some point. But in terms of all the priorities of the committee, that we have to do collective bargaining, we have to do the budget, we have to do the MSBA work, we have to do the, there's a couple of other policies that are currently jeopardizing some funding for us. There's a lot on our plates.
That's why I was asking. Yeah, Joan.
I hear what you're saying. I dislike the quote about, we have to cross things off before we can add things on, even though that's what I said. But I'm wondering if the policy subcommittee could take this on their agenda and get to it as, and do the background research, and with a commitment not to present anything to the committee until we cross something off the list.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Do we need more work from Northeastern students?
Yes, we do.
Okay, well, then, we have a policy subcommittee meeting on Monday. I'll put this on the agenda to see if that can be somehow helped. Yeah, Mara?
I, I mean, mostly, I'm just, I'm agreeing with Joan, and I'm agreeing with Ma, so it's tricky. But I think that there's a lot on our plate that, you know, it's hard to envision taking on something else, but it strikes me that this is something that's perhaps tying our hands to be able to find Band-Aids before we can find the larger solution. perhaps tying our hands to be able to find Band-Aids before we can find the larger solution. And I think if it's something that's making it harder to make the day-to-day operations, which 29 and 28 students, it's untenable.
Yeah.
So, which is obviously why we're addressing it now. But if there's a way that we could change that policy, so that next year, because I highly doubt we're gonna have a centralized, you know, registration by September.
Well, that's, the budget asks.
We'll see. But I'm just saying, if it makes it that you can solve a problem without having to add an FTE, seems logical.
Okay.
So, we can do more work?
Just note, I put it out to all of you. I didn't just say yes. Put that in the minutes. The chair did not automatically say yes.
He didn't say no, either.
Not making that decision.
It was we.
So, going back to the memo and what you are asking us to vote on tonight, are there further questions or a motion on?
Yeah, Mara. Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Dave, for other discussion? Yeah, Maya.
We are talking about a little less than $21,000 in budget for, that would hit FY20. Do we feel like we have room for that?
Didn't we just hear that over 1.5 million over in special education out of district placements?
I couldn't honestly say tonight, but I could guarantee that you have that.
Well, the other, the other, the other piece of not-so-good news is that two Leavens absence just came in as well. So, there's a little wiggle there with replacement people, so.
Well, you'd have to, I guess it would be a priority on, is there some expenses that you're not going to be able to, you know, there's still some money, unfortunately, in the Alex area.
You mean, in some override?
So, I don't know.
Override funds, that were earmarked for override.
Are we?
It's a tough call.
Are we able to go and talk with FinCom about, like, the reserve fund, which there is $125,000-ish in funds, the reserve fund?
Reserve fund?
Yeah.
It's $125,000.
Yeah. That hasn't had any requests as of yet from anybody.
As of yet.
What do you mean by, can you clarify what you meant by leave of LOAs returning?
So, if someone, if someone takes a leave and you hire a sub for them, depending on how long it is, you tend to save a little bit of money here and a little bit of money there, so.
So, you think there may be some room in the salary budget, is what you're saying?
Yep.
Due to some new changes that maybe Karen hasn't factored in yet?
I just signed it today, so I haven't even made it upstairs yet.
We also have positions out, don't we, that are unfilled for Paris?
Mm-hmm, yep.
That have been unfilled for about a half a year, right?
Right.
At this point, so.
There's a number of Paris, like, four or five positions.
Yes, yes. So, if anyone is looking to be a paraprofessional, we have openings. Yes.
Okay, so then, we had money to hire them, so we presumably, yeah, have money available.
Well, you did add, which is in the bunch of presentations, several positions in special education that were over and above your.
Yes.
That's why I can't answer completely that you would.
I, I, I'm trying to make sure Karen's first year here is not easy, so we keep doing this to her. But unfortunately, it's, I mean, this problem came up, you know, beginning, you know, after the winter break. So, we're now, by the time we look into solutions, figured out who was, who was in these classrooms and what would work best, and then get to, get to you folks. And then, we've got a post, and I'm hoping to ask the union for an emergency posting that we can fill as soon as possible to get some help in those classrooms.
It's just came to mind, one, only one thing that I can think of that you could do is take some more of your bus fees revolving.
Oh, that's true. There's still money left in that.
Right. So, you offset someplace else with the revolving for $20,000.
I mean, we did up that, you'll see in the budget, but, how much was it again, that you just said? The total that you're requesting right now?
Twenty thousand.
About $20,000.
Yeah, so, if you want to do a transfer or something like that.
Okay. All right. Yeah, Mara.
I have just a question that I'm just trying to wrap my head around, because now I'm just a little confused. So, there are eight new students between those two classrooms. That happened over winter break?
Just before and right after, and continually sense them, yes. So, I.
So, they all moved in around winter break?
There's, there's a bunch that moved in.
In October and January.
Yeah.
Well, it got higher from when we had the projections and the.
Right, it got higher, it got higher before we started, and then it's continued to grow. And we had two come before break, we had two come right after break, and there was another one or two last week or so.
And I, I am not gonna, I don't mean this next comment, I'm gonna try to phrase it in a way, forgive me if I phrase it in an eloquent way. Can someone remind me how much we got from the override?
4.7 million.
4.7 million, and we don't have 20,000, and we're gonna go ask FinCom to go into the reserve?
Can't.
We can't. That's insane. That would be so fiscally irresponsible of us as a school department. We made a promise, that if you trusted us with your money, your taxpayer money, we would be good stewards of that. We are not even through the year, and we can't guarantee we can cover 20,000? What are we doing?
Well, what I'm saying, as for me.
I'm not mad at you.
No, I know, but I'm saying, I can confidentially, right now, say, oh, yeah, I can find 20,000. The impossibility is just that special education is lowering up your budget. So, I mean, and not, nobody's fault.
I will say, though, I believe Oldham requested a teacher last year, and we did not put it in the budget.
Mm-hmm. And I believe they requested it many years prior to that.
But I can, like I said, I think it would be an easy one to transfer from the bus fees without causing any hardship.
But just to clarify, I know what you mean, but we're gonna take the revolving funds, transportation, and cover transportation costs.
I'd take some of the transportation expenses that would be
Yes.
Covered in the general fund in the coming months.
Yes.
And instead of putting them to the general fund, I'll put them to the revolving fund, which will free up some money in the general.
Money in our operating budget. I know that's what you meant. I'm just clarifying in case other people
Right.
Are not aware of what that is.
But I don't think that, that's just what came to mind really quickly, like, okay, I can guarantee that there's money in there. Because I, I mean, I have the update in the budget book on the revolving, so I know how much money's in there.
Do we have an update on how many unhired positions we have? So, like, those, we have, we thought, we think we have four Paris that haven't been paid, that have been budgeted for since July. You said we added some. Can we get a breakdown of that for the next meeting, so that we have a better sense of?
Say that again?
Positions that have been advertised are not filled.
Okay.
And, do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to know how much money we have that hasn't been spent, that we've already budgeted to spend.
Yeah, that's my question. So, I believe there was a motion. It was seconded. Is there further discussion?
What was the motion?
To approve the hiring of the teacher at $20,470.
Question, what does this do in terms of our pledge to not go over additional FTEs? Benefit of positions?
We said that we would stay within five.
Uh-huh.
With the, but that specifically excluded anything that was mandated by special education. So, this would count towards our five.
Right.
But there have been some other positions that we have added that did not count towards our five. There were, like, a couple of, like, paraprofessionals who were, like, one-to-one aides who were required, and things like that. So, at this point, I don't believe that we've added any this year that counted towards that.
Okay.
Well, I can tell you.
Like, sort of more discretionary.
The new ones. ELL teacher, ELL teacher, ELL, ELL, sped Paris, sped Paris, sped Paris.
Right, so one.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. All right, so then, another quick update. In your, in your packet is a yellow form, projections for next year. It's a first draft of projections. I would like to, I wanted to give you this, you can start thinking about it as we enter our budget process. But we have not vetted this with the administrative team yet. So, there'll probably be a new version when we come together next time for your packet. So, I didn't want to get that to you right away. There was an update that I sent out today to all families. Our lead nurse, Jill Driscoll, sent a message home about, we've been getting some questions and concerns about the flu and the coronavirus. So, she had put together a letter for that. So, if you did not listen to the message, please check your emails. This passed, yesterday, actually, the 5th of February, Paul Ash, Dr. Paul Ash, former superintendent, came in and worked with the leadership team on, you know, methods that closed achievement gaps, that was in preparation for developing a plan for our Student Opportunities, Student Opportunities Act. And specifically, we need to figure out what subgroups we want to try to target with that money. And in your packets, again, is this, is the top 37, 37 districts. I did take us and put us to the top, just because I think we should be on top anyways. But I figured it'd make it easier to see the categories. And again, that $564,886 has got to be used for articulating this plan, and that's gonna need to be a discussion, because it will change, I believe, how the, how the town has previously split up money. So, this is the slides from Dr. Ash. I also included in your packet the full set of slides, the non-cellphone picture, picture version from the Commissioner of Education, so you could look. And then also in your packet is, is the, a letter and a form from, oh, here it is, the commissioner that actually goes through what the requirements are, and not that I'm gonna give you homework, but I figured it would be some good reading, so you would kind of know what we know as we go through, because we're gonna have to move pretty quick on putting this plan together. And then, the really great news is that next Thursday, the 13th of February, we will be in Boston at the Massachusetts School Building Association to, authority, rather, to meet with the board. And we are looking forward to being voted into Phase II feasibility at that point in time. So, that will be, you'll need to be there before 10 o'clock on Thursday. And that is it for the superintendent's report.
And then, there's just one more item for late agenda that was sent to us from Segal Reese. So, you should have the memorandum of understanding extended out Monday after we received it. So, Segal is working on a Samsona grant. As you know, we work very closely with them, with Minds Matter and Impact Norwood. There is a potential with this grant, if they get it, that a portion of money might be able to help us in this whole system, support some of the mental health initiatives that Lori Semino started to talk about tonight. Basically, this is just a letter of support, memorandum of understanding. You can see she has requested the signatures of Chief Brooks, the Fire Chief Morris, Ms. Poland, who's at Norwood Hospital, Dr. Thompson, and myself. And I didn't want to sign anything as Chair of the School Committee without your approval to do so.
Motion to authorize Chairman, Chairwoman to sign off on this memorandum of understanding.
Second?
Is there a discussion or questions?
Just, Dr. Thompson, I assume you recommend that we sign this?
Yes, I did read it. I think we have an excellent working relationship, and I wholeheartedly endorse it.
Okay, great.
I'm curious with the second bullet. It says, collect and share community health indicator data related to substance. I'm just, what I wanted to be specific about is what data are we gonna be sharing about our students?
The Metro West data that we already shared.
Okay.
Right, right.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, they're our partner in that collection, and they help fund the payment of that survey. Any other questions, or, so, all in favor? All right, I will sign that and get that to Segal tomorrow, so thank you. So, moving along to budget, I think we're just gonna switch the order quickly and do the budget transfer first.
Yeah, I think that would be really quick.
Yeah.
I just have one budget transfer request from my pal Alex. The budget transfer request to reallocate the middle school project lead-the-way expenses to their proper accounts. It's $30,000 from the instructional salary curriculum workshop account. The available balance in there currently is $48,867. It's going to be transferred $15,000 into the middle school instructional supplies account, and a middle school instructional equipment account.
So, moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Dave, all in favor?
Okay.
Any comments? All right, great. So, I will sign it and pass it around, because everybody does need to sign the budget transfer.
Yep.
But now, moving into the FY21 budget preliminary discussion, Dr. Thompson and Mr. Scher.
I spread out a little bit with all my notes.
Ms. Scher, can I first tell you that this is amazing?
Oh, thank you. Thanks. I'm sorry it took a little time, but, first year, and I get a lot of investigation. All right, so, the beginning of budget season, fun times. So, I want to first say that this is definitely a preliminary budget. There's still difficult decisions to make on which expenses will remain in the final budget, which expenses might be pulled out to the extra Chapter 70A that you have coming. So, I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that this is definitely a preliminary budget. So, that being said, okay. So, Norwood Public Schools FY21 preliminary budget, and the amount of $51,145,362. It's a 3.5% increase. We brought forward this preliminary budget, but later on in the presentation, we'll discuss some positions and expenses we were unable to include in this, in order to stay within the 3.5% increase. What we decided to do was, we did the preliminary budget with a 3.5% increase, and then we'd have a column with some expenses and positions that the decision would have to be made with further discussion on whether they're pulled into the budget, certain expenses are pulled out, and also with the question with regard to the new Chapter 70 money. What I want to say is, this budget's gonna look quite different for people. You, your previous, previous budget, as we know, really didn't follow the DESI account system. It did when you did the end-of-year report, so I don't, I want to change that. It did when you did the end-of-year report, but when you did your budget, it went by P codes. P codes could be, one P code could equal, like, four different Department of Ed codes, the DESI function codes. And also, those DESI function codes have to be designated to certain locations, so schools. So, when you see this budget, it's gonna be difficult for you to compare account to account, because it's just such a difference between the last, the previous budgets that you had in the past. But the good, it's good to know that you're, we're going forward with the new DESI account system, and you have this new financial system, MUNUS, which is a wonderful system. And each month that goes by, things are improving in that area. I've broken down the budget into the specific DESI function codes, to try to get people to have a better understanding of the way this works with the DESI function codes. And also, to give you an idea of the percentage of the budget that each function code is. The first one is District Leadership and Administration. Like, District Leadership and Administration, those are the activities which their, their purpose is the general direction, execution, and control of the affairs of the school district that are system-wide. So, that means they're not confined to one school. These are expenses that are system-wide. Some of the categories that are in there, you have the school committee expenses, where you have the, like, the school committee clerk, you have your MASC fees and dues, you have your MSA, you have your MASC policy audit in there right now. It's a couple of expenses in that area. The second one in this category is District Administration. And here you have your salaries for your superintendent, your administrative assistant to the superintendent, your assistant superintendent. You have fees and dues, you have contracted services. For example, the District Strategic Planning contracted services, the Aspen Student Information System, and the Communication System. So, what, the expenses that belong. So what, the expenses that belong to that function code follow with that. So that's why it's important to know with the expenses that would follow with the superintendent, for example, any of his travel, any of his PD, stuff like that, would be in the same function code as, as his salary is. The third one is the finance and administration services, and that's where you have all the finance and salaries, myself, all my staff. You have your advertising and your legal services in there. You have your administrative technology contracted services in there. For example, you have your E-Rate consultants, you have your management service consultants, and you have some of your copy machines that are leased. An important thing to note with the copy machine leases is they also have to be put in the area where they're located. So if you have copy machines in the schools, they're going to be in this section, which is the 2000s area, which is your instructional services, is, it's like an equipment expense there. So not only are you seeing that your P codes are different and your DESI function codes are different, some of your expenses that previously you had like one copy machine lease and one account, that's not how it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be separated by school and separated into the specific location. So in this budget that you have right now, it is in there. I did give you a copy of the copy machine lease, there's two leases. One is about to expire in May, but I did meet with the representative, and it's going to be similar. So those expenses are the same as they were last year. So you can see all the leases, but they are spread all over. So the district and leadership and administration is about 2.2, 2.29% of this budget, okay? The section area, the second area, instructional services, this is really the meat of your budget. You've, you've got the teaching of the students, you've got your staff, your curriculum, your PD. So this is a very large section, and you'll see it's 73.3% of your budget, okay? That's where you have your teachers, you have your district-wide academic leadership, which is, would be like, for example, Lori. It's all that leadership that is district-wide and not pertaining to one school. You've got your school building leadership, that would be, for example, the principals, the administrative assistants. You've got all their supplies, the dues, the copy machines that follow with them. You've got your teacher salaries. You've got other teaching services, which would be your therapists, your substitutes, your paraprofessionals, your library salaries, your special education medical and therapeutic contracted services. Those are in your other teaching services. And they also, in this area, is your professional development. So that would be your PD that you have for your teachers, both inside and outside providers that you bring in. Your instructional materials and equipment is also in this area, and that would be your instructional supplies, your books, your instructional equipment, including like whiteboards, your instructional hardware, which would be your Chromebooks, your computers. Again, you have some copy machine leases, and you have your instructional software. The final one in this area would be your guidance, counseling, and testing services. And this is where you have your guidance counselors, the psychologists, you have your testing, okay? The third area is other school services. Now, other school services, 7.62% of your budget. In this area, you have your attendance and parent liaison services, which is where you have your translation services. You have your police services for school attendance and residency issues. You have your health services, which is where you have your nurses and all her expenses that, again, would be in her area. So she's got her supplies, she's got a contracted service, and she's got some software. In your transportation services, you have your Director of Transportation and all the salaries that are in the transportation area, and you also have your bus contract, your special education contracted services for transportation. You've got your repairs, your gas. This next area in this is food services, and food services in this budget, you only have your lunchroom supervisor stipends. The rest of the food service expenses are in the revolving account. Athletics, you've got your director, your administrative assistant salary, you've got your coaches, and then you've got all your athletic expenses that follow with that. And the final one would be other student services, where you have the AV director salary, you have your stipends for your clubs and activity, you have some of your fine art and dramas that would be extracurricular, not expenses that are part of like a class. If you have a music class during the day, it would not be in that area, it would be in the instructional area. And that, again, is 7.62%. Next, we go to the, the operation and maintenance of plant area, and that is 10.72% of your budget, and that would, we would, I don't really have to explain too much about that. That's the operation and maintenance of plant, which have your custodial services, you have your heating, heating of buildings, your utilities, your grounds, you have your building security system, your maintenance of equipment. But one thing to note is in this area, you have your network communication infrastructure. So if you have like technology that is with the school, that wouldn't be in this area, but infrastructure would be, okay? So if the, even the salaries with infrastructure would be in there. So if you have employees that are working with the students in technology, not in this area. But you have employees that are working with the infrastructure, for example, Joe Kidd, he'd be in this area, okay? Next, you have your benefits and fixed charges, which is a small percentage of your budget right now, it's .09%. And in here, the only expense that you have in here right now is your employee separation costs. So when employee retires, if, you should be budgeting to make sure you have the money for when an employee retires, if they have some sick leave buyback, if they, if it's a possibility, you know that there's going to be some vacation. But at least try to budget for some expected expenses in there. The 6,000 community services is .02%. Here, you have your civic activities contracted services. For this year, it has the Minds Matter Interface Referral Helpline for your mental health and wellness, and you also have some Metro West Youth Behavioral Survey. So nice to know you have some expenses in here for the community, okay? Then we get into the 8,000, this debt retirement and services, and you do not have anything in this right here. A lot of those expenses are more on the tide, the town side, which would be on the end-of-year report they, they give to me. And the final category is the 9,000, the programs with other school districts. That's 5.97% of this particular budget, and that would be your special education out-of-district tuition. You've got your tuition to the mass public schools, to the private schools, to the collaboratives, okay? So that's a little bit of synopsis on how it break down the budget is with the DESI code.
Karen, that out-of-district budget is like, we figure out what the, what we expect to pay in tuitions, and then we subtract out what we expect to get in circuit breaker reimbursement, right?
Yes, we do.
So that's why that number looks so much lower than the number that Lori was talking about.
And later on, right, and later on in the presentation, you'll see another reason why it's lower.
Yeah.
But yes, we do take the circuit breaker, we, the other thing, what we normally would, what I would suggest to do, what I would normally do with it, is add a 3% on any tuition that you're, you're putting in your budget because of things like the rate increase that Lori was talking about today, okay? So next, I'm just going to show you, let me see if we can go. You can see the budget by category, what a large piece of that pie your instructional services is. It's 73.3% of that. The other thing I want you to note is 81% of your total budget is salaries. So when you look at it, salaries and instructional services pretty much take up your budget. Next, I wanted to go into a little bit on, so how do we go about building this budget, okay? So we reviewed all the contracts, we look at the employee contracts, we look at the individual contracts. I look at the employee separation costs, I look at the past contract and the copy machines contracts, are they current? Is it going to be something that's up for renewal? And that's why we have the copy machine fellow in, is it going to be a large increase in? So we want to make sure that we recognize those when we're doing the budget. The utilities, you want to look at your rate increases and your history. So not only the rate increases, but the history. So example of the utilities is, sometimes you have some really bad winters, and sometimes you have some really good winters. So you might want to take an average of the last three years to get a better idea of what to budget. The facilities, is there a maintenance plan that you have in place that is some, you know, are there projects that you're going to be doing this year? So these are kind of the things that when you're building a budget, especially as a new person, you really have to investigate what's going on in your school system, okay? The other thing is you want to be realistic when you're budgeting, okay? So I've seen this in the past, and my history is people will take some of their facilities, for example, and then just add 3%. And that doesn't always work because if you had your utilities wrong, and then you add 3%, you're going to be wrong again. So you definitely want to do realistic budgeting when you do it. When we did the facilities, I did give it to Paul and asked him to review the history and then tweak it a little, which he did. And one of the things when he did that was we increased the electricity because that, the electricity had been budgeted lower and with that rate increase that you got. And it was also a rate increase and a peak load change, which we got to that. Before we get to the next section, I just wanted to give a little bit of some of the great things that are in this budget. You've got $147,828 for professional development for your staff, great thing. You've got $109,100 outside professional development providers, again, another good thing. And you've got $300,000 for history and science, tech, engineering curriculum refresh. You've got $177,074 for instructional hardware, so you continue your one-to-one program with your student Chromebooks for grade six and nine, as well as computers and smart boards. You've got $69,272 for other instructional hardware. Other instructional hardware would be, example, would be recess equipment, PE equipment, whiteboards, all right? So in your past, some of this instructional equipment was back in the facilities area as an equipment, rep and rep you called it, but it should not be in there, it should be part of your instructional equipment, okay? The equipment that would be in that area, which you called the rep and rep, would be more like, I need a new chair, I need a new table, okay? So you will see some school expenses in that area, but it would be more like that. Somebody wants a cafeteria table, it would be in there, has nothing to do with educating other students. But, I mean, educate your students, we have a C, but it's not really relating to, okay, I got to educate this student with this chair, okay? So what else? In the athletic program, there's a little bit of money in there to expand the program for cross-country and wrestling at the middle school, all right? And again, the services for their community. You have that mental health and wellness referral helpline and the Metro West Youth Behavioral Survey. So there's a lot of really good things in this budget. Then we move on to some budget drive, okay? So budget drivers, what drives your budget? You've got your contractual obligations, and you've got your increase in staff due to enrollment and student needs. You've got your educational mandates, which can be your out-of-district tuition, your sped contractual services based on IPs, what could be your therapy services, your contracted, outside contracted therapy services, and you've got your transportation. Sorry, I'm just catching up with myself on my notes here. So some of the budget busters. Here we got the FY20 new staff that was approved by the school committee, and these were non-override positions that are included in this preliminary budget, they are in there. You've got your, some ELL teachers. The reasoning for all of these was student needs and increase in enrollment, okay? And the total on that was 5.4 full-time equivalencies, $256,045, all right? That's the first thing that we had.
I just want to, I just want, so that meant we were exceeding ratios, we were no longer in compliance unless we added these positions, they're mandated, correct?
Yeah. I'm going to relay a lot of the educational ones over to that side.
They're mandated, right? Great, thanks.
Those are all, those are all mandated.
I'm a figure, I'm a figure person.
Those are all mandated positions, you know, and again, you know, the increased numbers that we experience, you know, really pushed, you know, the will definitely, you know, we had that autism program and the kids moving in, we had more moving in, if you remember, the bulge, we had more kids moving into that global delay program that caused that needed to happen, and the ELL, we've, you know, we had what, actually 50, 60 kids that we didn't expect. And that's after we added with the override. And so, yeah, then those are all mandated, so.
So then here you have the FY21 new staff request. These are not included in the, in the 3.5% budget, preliminary budget. In order to stay within the 3.5% increase, we pulled out all of these positions into one column, and there are 17.8 full-time equivalencies, and they total $782,817. I put next to each staff request the reasoning behind the staff request, and you'll see you've got the registrar, which they feel would be better efficiency for the school. I said you've got ESL coordinator for regulations, you've got some sped teachers, you've got for student needs, for enrollment, you've also got some therapists, psychologists, speech and language, pathologists, PCBA, again, dissimilar to what Lori was talking about, for the student needs, the caseload, program enhancement, all right? So those, at the moment, are in a separate column outside of the 3.5%. The educational mandates also not included in this 3.5% increase. You've got your sped out-of-district tuition, the projected estimate is at 52 out-of-district students, and the estimate for FY21 is 62. And that's 1,604,619. When you get a new sped special education student that's in an out-of-district placement, you're also going to get a little bit more special education transportation. So despite the fact that I did increase this, the special education, let's see, where is it, the bus fees revolving fund offset, I increased it from in FY20 at $200,000, I increased it to $350,000, and you still have an overage of $50,000 that at, at this time, we pulled into that column and is not in this 3.5% increase, okay? According to Al, the Director of Transportation, let's give you some figures. In FY19, he said he transported 137 sped students. FY20, he's got 173, 173 students and rising, okay? He has brought a lot of those, he has done a lot of those in-house, so his, he just does a fabulous job. There are a few runs that are outside, but the majority of them are in-house, which was, he's got his new vans that he got, and he also has some new vans in his capital expense that we request. All right. So what do we do now? Fee-based revenues. Maybe we should analyze or review your current fee schedules, okay? So athletic, your preschool, your rental facilities, your bus fees. Maybe that's something that Maryster take a good look at and see if there's possibility that we can increase some of these fees, all right? We review the state funding. We're still not positive on the Chapter 78, the circuit breaker reimbursements, it's still a little bit up in the air. Your E-Rate technology, that, I'm not sure if any, who is aware of what the E-Rate is, but the E-Rate is you get some money to put towards your technology, and so that is also some state funding that is up in the air. Your grant allocations, awards, and opportunities, maybe there's some new grants that are out there. We do have a new grant person coming in, who I think I was interviewing, and she seems fabulous, and maybe she'll be able to find us some new opportunities and some awards. One thing we did, we are losing the inclusive preschool learning environment grant this year. FY20 was the last year for that. It was something that they had given us fair warning on, so we were aware that we were losing that. Apparently, that's $30,000 and pays for paraprofessional. That paraprofessional- is in the 3.5% increase budgeted that you have going right now. So how are we going to be account, how are we going to monitor this budget and increase accountability? Um, consistency of the year-to-date budget reports, improve internal controls and checks and balances. Um, I just had a new employee start this week that replaced, um, one that I lost in November, um, and, um, she's going to be a great help for that to improve your checks and balance and internal controls. Um, have a tighter ring on the collection of fees. We need to start to do that. Um, in collaboration with the school in town. It's teamwork, as we all know, um, so, um, to monitor the budget to increase accountability. All right? And to end it, it's just my Ben Franklin saying, which is, an investment in knowledge always pays the best interest. So now I open it up to.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, Joan.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Do we have a list of grants and their expiration dates?
Uh, you will, very shortly, because the next school committee meeting is going to have that. I have, um, working on that right now. I do have, I, I don't have it with me, but, um, where can I get in the list of the employees that are paid in the grants?
Thank you.
Well, the positions, not the employees, the positions that are paid in each grant. Um, you'll have, uh, what the, um, it's going to be a spreadsheet that will give you what the grant award was, um, what has been expended thus far, um, with the revolving and the grants. Um, we're, we're in the process right now of working on it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I had one other question. On slide eight, where you have the FY twenty-one new staff requests.
Yeah.
Um, I count four of them that would appear to be required mandates, five. I really can't do math. Five of them that would appear to be required mandates. Um, is that true that those are mandated? We have to do them no matter what? So I'm looking at the bulge, special ed, um, middle school, those are all?
Well, otherwise, we, we have, so this is, this is our, our challenge. You know, the bulge, that bulge sped teacher, we have kids aging up, we need to develop a new program. Um, ELL coordinator, we're, we really should have someone, uh, to coordinate our ELL program. We have enough numbers, we should have that. Um, by regulation, so that is a requirement. Uh, the, the special ed teacher, uh, point six?
Yes.
Oh, that's middle school. That's, that's a need, that's a conversion factor there, that's for special ed, we're not meeting requirements there. High school sped teacher, that's that program, we were going to expand up there last year, but we didn't because a student was going to stay behind, they weren't at that forty-eight window. They will be, it'll be one student, but it'll soon be four, I think, the year after. And you have to have the program running in order for people to go into it. Um, the Callahan English is a second language teacher, that's due to increased enrollment there. Um, Cleveland Grade One, that's not mandated, that's, but, you know, the numbers, the old hand Grade Five teacher, who was the Grade Four position that we just spoke about a few minutes ago, that's not mandated, but doesn't mean it's not needed. Uh, elementary sped paraprofessional, that's, um, the, those are two, again, enrollments and new, and new programs. Psychologists, Laurie spoke about the, um, the caseload there and getting actual quality testing and, and things back quicker. I mean, it's, they're just trying to do too much. And if we had any other need besides doing testing for IEPs, we, we would have to contract somebody out because they have no room in what they're doing now. Speech and language pathologist, same problem. BCBA, same problem. Those are not necessarily mandated, um, but they're a good idea to improve what we're doing.
Can we get a, can we get a list of what's definitively mandated? Because some of the language in here, which I, there's no fault there, but some of the language, it's a student needs for BCBA, but it also says student needs for high school sped teacher. Those are both student needs, but one of them is mandated and one of them is not. So if there was a way to clearly delineate which ones are part of the mandates and which ones aren't, that would be helpful.
I had emailed Dr. Thompson and Karen last night when I was going through it, because if you look at the Excel set, Excel spreadsheet, there's like the green column, which is the sped mandates, and then there's the yellow unable to increase with a 3.5. And I pulled out those positions in my email and asked, should we, could we put them in that green column? I think we were going to dive into this deeper tomorrow at our budget subcommittee meeting, and, um, because I can't open my email right now under our protocols, um, I believe those positions added up to about six hundred thousand. Um, but if you guys would like, I can, just information, I didn't give my opinion deliberately, I just asked, I, or I, you can send it out, the email that I sent to you with the positions and the
We can update it on the next school committee meeting.
Yeah, that would be great. That'd be helpful.
I'll just work with Laurie to make sure I've got the ones that are, that should be in that column and that column.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, so Karen, I want to thank you. Um, I know that this has been an incredibly challenging time to be jumping into a new position. I think, you know, you've been here less than six months, and you're now building the new budget, which would have been challenging anyway, but you're also dealing with this MUNIS conversion, which is, um, uh, challenging and exciting and wonderful.
It is very exciting, and next year is going to be wonderful.
Next year's going to be beautiful, beautiful. Um, but I really.
I hope I can get a haircut next week. So, I usually have.
Yeah, I, I just found time today to schedule a car repair that I've been putting off for a month, so I know, I know what you feel.
Yeah. But I would just say that, um, I love all the background information that's in here. We have never had this much backup information to figure out where these numbers came from, and so, um, I'm looking forward to diving a little bit deeper into this tomorrow at our budget subcommittee meeting.
All the fun stuff's tomorrow.
Yeah.
Which is what I like, but.
And, and there is going to be some, some funny changes, just because things weren't in the right places in the old budgets. And you'll see where there, it says, you know, negative twenty-one percent, they have, Karen has a note there where it says these were inappropriately placed in the old system, so.
Uh, the, the, again, the MUNIS is still a work in progress, because like even when I look through the MUNIS, some of the descriptions to the accounts are kind of like funky. So it's like, I, I, I'm hoping by the end of this year that I can get the descriptions to it. When it, when you look at a chart of accounts and, and the MUNIS, um, I want people to be able to look at that and say, oh yeah, I know what should be in that account, and not have to say, what goes in that account? So, um, it's still a work in progress, but there's been a lot of progress made. So, um, you know, I, I have to give kudos to my staff because they've been working really hard, and so I just want them to know that. I appreciate them.
Oh, Dr. Thompson, before you put that away.
Oh.
Can I ask, no, 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 where you were, you were just on the right page. I was going to just say, uh, can we just flag the, the budget, the community survey?
Oh, yeah.
Because I just saw it on the screen. Um, right there on our main page is, um, down the next thing, is our community survey, oops, it's the, the one with like the green.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah, 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 that one. That's our community survey that the budget subcommittee is working on, and we've had more than three hundred responses so far, so I thank everybody for that. But, um, if anybody else is willing to go and spend just a few minutes, it's really not long, um, and answer those questions, we would really appreciate it. And there are paper copies available at the senior center, at the library, and at town hall. Sorry for the interruption.
Pissed off.
Yeah.
So we do meet as a budget subcommittee tomorrow morning at ten. I'll be throwing three of these when I see you. Normally I would say if there's anything that jumps out, like, let us know before the budget subcommittee, and you definitely can, but I also understand that it's twelve hours from now, and you might not be able to quickly turn that information around to us.
And next year I promise to have the book with you a little bit, I was just around the clock trying to get it on timer.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Were there any other questions at this time before we move on? Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, ready?
Ready.
Ready. Okay, so.
I'm going to do the thing that I know you're not going to like, but it's ten o'clock, and I know we still do have an executive session to go. I'm wondering if any of these can be tabled?
Well, we definitely need to do the school calendar and the donations. I mean, I can, I can bring this back at the, at the next meeting if you'd like that, so.
Table it.
I'm going to make a motion to table the, um, the strategic plan update. Sorry.
I know they've prepared, but I'm, I was.
Okay, all favor? Against? Sorry, guys, you're just going to kill me with the long-term agenda, but, okay. Because this already got bumped from another meeting, but, and we are under a timeline with a lot of things, but it is what it is.
Right. Well, just, just real quick, the, I mean, if you go under district, down here, strategic plan, it brings you to this page. Uh, you can see the report that the committee has been given. It is posted, uh, right here with all the updates, and you can also, uh, flip through the dashboard. Um, there are some yellows, there are some reds, but we are, um, making good progress. And like I said before, if it's not a challenging and aggressive strategic plan, it's all green, which this is not, so. I am discovering as I go through it, we finish some things, but the problem I have been working on, which is why there's a new update at your place, is that the timeline wouldn't let the person go back and put it out because they were beyond the time that it was done. So like, we still, we had to stretch the timeline to put the percentage in for them, so it'd actually give me a chance to vet it with, uh, some of the administrators next week, so. With that, let's do the calendar.
Okay, so Dr. Thompson and Dr. Wyatt?
Dr. Wyatt, do you want to speak to it first, or you want me to do it, or?
Um, no, I can speak quickly to it. So, uh, um, this calendar sort of went through two iterations. One was starting after Labor Day and this one starting just before Labor Day. And so it was vetted with the teachers', um, union, and they voted recently to support this calendar that you have in front of you, which starts, um, school, where school starts before Labor Day on the thirty-first with convocation. Um, the problem with the, the other model was that it, it really ran very late in the year, and if we had a bunch of snow days, we'd be in a real pinch. Um, so I think this, this is by far the best model, and everyone's pretty comfortable with it. Then what we did is we went through several, um, conversations with department chairs and principals around when do we want to have our professional development days, our three full days, and how do we want to distribute our half-days? So, um, it's a new format, by the way, which I want to thank Priscilla Riordan for sort of finding this. She looked at a bunch of other districts, and, um, I think this is just a much cleaner, easier to read and follow kind of format, so hopefully you like it as well. Um, and so you can see it's color-coded, where our, our, um, the pink days are our full in-service days, and the gray shaded days are the half-days. Now, some of those half-days are for professional development, and some of them are just half-days for early release before vacation or something like that. Um, so that should be pretty, uh, pretty clear, hopefully, in the, in the text part, which runs down the middle of the, um, the calendar here. Um, uh, what else can I tell you? Um, yeah, no, I think, I think that's about it. Um, we decided on the full days for our PD based on our professional development needs for next year. We do need to front-load some work around our, you know, just making sure everyone's ready to implement the new English Language Arts curriculum. Um, so that's why we wanted to have that day right there, um, on September first. And then, um, there's one on November third, which is, uh, I think, the election day, right? Which is kind of a given for us in many ways, because, you know, we closed down the schools, and it's going to be a big one. We hope, anyway, the turnout is going to be, um, phenomenal. Um, and then in January, uh, yes, uh, in January, um, uh, is sort of a nice time to sort of reassess where we are and, and finish up with some of the, um, our, our full-day professional development. Um, so, questions?
So just to be clear for everybody out there who can't actually see the calendar, uh, teachers would come back the thirty-first of, of October, of August, rather.
I was like, wow.
It is after ten, my bedtime's nine, just for the record. Um, so, uh, come back the thirty-first of August, the first would be, first of September would be a professional day. Students would come the second and the third, Friday the fourth, schools would be closed. Labor Day weekend would be a four-day weekend, the seventh being, uh, Labor Day, uh, and then schools would reopen on the eighth.
Motion to approve? For the discussion? Yeah, Joan?
Sorry, I have two questions that are quasi-related to the calendar. Do I, um, do we have, it's not noted on here, do we have a, um, uh, no testing policy on major religious holidays?
I'm not sure if we have a.
I, I don't, I'm not aware of it being a policy, but it's a, it's an accepted practice.
It is.
Right. Is it a policy?
It's a practice.
Practice, yeah.
It's practice, but not policy?
Yeah.
Okay, because I couldn't find the policy. Okay. Uh, I don't know how to do this. Do I make a motion that the, I'd like for the policy subcommittee to take a look at making the practice a policy? With permission of the board?
Yep.
I don't know if I'm supposed to make a motion. Do I even need to?
You can make a motion. I'm not supposed to make motions, Chair, but.
I would like to make a motion that the policy subcommittee investigate making the current practice of no testing on major religious holidays a policy.
Second.
Any?
We did have a motion on the table.
Ah.
Yeah.
Robert's rule's a border.
Oh, can we go back to the motion on the calendar and then come back to that, or?
Uh.
Is that, is what?
I feel like they're.
You decide on that impacting if you are okay with this calendar?
Yes, that impacts whether or not I feel okay with approving the calendar.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure procedurally how I'm supposed to go about that.
I don't think we need to worry. Get too hung up on Robert's rules. I think we should just take Joan's motion and resolve that, and then we can go back to mine. I'm fine.
Okay. So any discussion on Joan's motion? All in favor?
All right.
All right, unanimous, so we can add that to our agenda?
Yep.
Do you have a second question?
My second question can come after the approval of the calendar.
Okay. Um, I just have one quick question. Will it be clarified on early release days? Because I know at least at the elementary level, some days are out at twelve, some days are out at twelve-thirty, and that's usually specified, right?
Right. Um.
Like, before holidays, twelve, for other reasons, it's twelve-thirty? I thought that was usually on the calendar, so.
Yeah, it is, and actually, in looking at that, I, we can add that, I can ask Priscilla to add that in. I think we might have room for that, just again, so there's no confusion.
Yeah, just so it's really clear. I would just recommend that one small edit.
That seemed to drop off there.
Yeah.
Um, one other clarification, just in case you get asked from anybody why we pick the days that we do for our early release days, um, for professional development. We try to sprinkle them across the week as much as possible, so that, um, our specials, specialists don't get, um, you know, don't lose an excessive amount of instructional time. So we really try to sprinkle them across the days of the week. And, uh, we don't want to stack them up on Fridays typically and Mondays, because those oftentimes can be, while they may be advantageous to parents in some ways, it doesn't always, um, generate the, the best kind of attendance results that we want, you know, sometimes, so.
A motion on the table to approve the calendar, what's second, right?
And I'm just going to amend my motion to, like, include your, your suggested change of the times for the elementary release.
Okay, great. So second on that amendment? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, wonderful.
Can I ask my other question related to calendaring?
Yes, yes, sure.
Um, do we, is there any conversation around the extended day calendar?
I'm not sure I, I mean, the extended day.
In terms of?
In terms of when the extended day program starts and when the extended day program ends.
The time of extended day?
Nope, the, the actual, like, weeks that it runs.
We have not had that conversation. They do run for part of the summer, they run, uh, during February and April vacation, they do not run in the December timeframe.
Right, and there's a significant, there are at least two or three weeks that they don't run in the summer, um, typically around the ends, and so I guess I'm asking the question if we can consider that, if we can discuss that. How, I'm, I'm still unclear as to how the extended day is officially connected.
Okay. Is under his authority? Um, if there is a fee change structure, that will have to come to the school committee. I think something like that, though, operationally is more Dr. Thompson and Chris Capizo, I, I believe.
Right. I mean, you know, part of it is, I mean, if they, I mean, if you don't close down the program at, at some point, then those folks don't get the summer break, and a lot of them are school employees.
So, but right, my question is, is do we have any sort of? So, but right, my question is, is do we have any sort of influence over that? I'm still unsure as to how the extended day program connects to us. It's a, is it a revolving account?
It, it is a revolving count. It's a, it's a separate part of the school system that they report to me.
They don't, they don't come out of our operating budget at all.
So they do not come out of the operating budget?
They're self-funded.
They're, they're a self-funded, semi-independent autonomous group.
It's different than athletics or transportation. Food services.
Okay, I can.
It'll be part of the report next.
Yeah, there's a couple of things with extended day that I know the team is looking at, and they're a big piece of our start school, start time.
I actually, most, most extended day programs in schools that are related to schools do not run over the summer and do not run over vacations. So this was a little unusual where it does do that, so.
I'm not entirely sure that I fully agree with that statement based on this area. Um, and so I can let it, I, I'm happy to let it go pending, kind of answering my, I can answer my questions not at ten twenty-five.
Right.
In a meeting. I can ask those questions later, and we can have a conversation offline around it.
Teresa and Kristen come into a meeting.
She's on the calendar, but I need to meet with you and her and finalize some things. And she is part of our.
Right, cause she's coming up as well.
That's why I was asking if you meant start and end times of the actual.
No, 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 I meant calendaring.
That's part of our school start time conversation.
No, I meant calendaring, not start and end times.
Yeah. Maybe just send your questions to, to Dave, and then we can determine if it's something that has to come back to us or not.
Sure.
Okay. So last is the consent agenda. We have one donation in front of us tonight.
Yeah, it is a five hundred dollar donation from, uh, Mobile, Exxon Mobil Corporation for the high school.
Motion to approve? Second. All in favor? Unanimous. Wonderful. Uh, so school committee agenda, Dave, do you have anything this evening?
Um, I'll reserve comments for the next meeting.
Okay. Just same. Maya?
Nothing this evening. Mara?
Um, so, yes, I, after a, a lot of deliberation, while I'm incredibly proud to have served on this committee, um, for the past three years, and I'm very proud of all the work that we've accomplished as a committee, um, I will not be seeking reelection for a, a new term. So when my, my term is up in April, that will be the end of my time on the committee. So just wanna thank my, uh, committee members and the administration, and it's been a, a real honor to, to serve in this role.
Thank you, Mara. I have things in my head that I really wanna say to you, and I was gonna draft it a little nicer, and I plenty of time to do that, and it's late. Um, but, um, in short, thank you. But more will be coming, just to bear you for that. Um, I will be running for reelection, so my term is also over, but, um, I am running for reelection at this time. So at this time, we do have to go back into executive session. Um, there is a lot on the school committee's plate. I would like the public to know that. We are a very hard-working committee in many, many ways. Um, so I do need to poll, because we are gonna go into executive session and only reconvene for the purpose of endorsement. Um, so Mara?
Yes.
Maya?
Um, I'll make a motion first.
Okay.
I can't make the motion.
Motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second on Maya's motion? No, thank you. Mara?
Yes.
Yes, Maya.
Yes.
Yes.
Dave? Yes. Thank you, everybody, and we will see you February twenty-sixth, is our next school committee meeting.